Great, welcome everyone.
Hello.
Over live. Thanks, and so this is a work session to discuss the Takah release of additional Rita funds. And so we got Bruce Kimmel on the phone and Susan staring at the phone. And so we'll turn it over to Susan and Bruce.
Okay, Bruce, I'm just going to do kind of the sound check first.
Sure.
Okay, I think we did pretty well. You know, the last meeting?
The last one, we had a discussion on the ACG report on the financial feasibility of the Arts Campus at Willis. So, generally, the council, based on the information that was provided in that report, thought that it was generally financially feasible. And we had some recommendations regarding moving forward with the lease and some of the financial considerations with the use of the real estate transfer assessment. And the council felt more comfortable with the lease at that time and directed that the lease be brought back to the town council for this meeting, which you're going to see later on the agenda. But they really wanted to decouple the conversation regarding the use of the real estate transfer assessment, how it would be used, and performance standards related to the use of the funds. So, we, Bruce Kimmel from Elers, who's the town's financial analyst, and staff have been working on this now for about a month. And what we're going to do tonight is we'll start with Bruce. He's in Denver getting ready to get on the plane in about a half an hour. He's got a six o'clock flight. So I'm going to start with Bruce, and then I'll interject. Basically, what we want to do at the end is see if there's consensus on any of the items that we're going to present tonight, and which items need more discussion or more information. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Bruce.
Great, thanks Susan, and thanks everyone. You know, so this conversation is really drawing from the discussion that you had two weeks ago with the Takah representatives. And from my vantage point on the phone, and Susan confirmed it, it seems that everyone wanted to just further pursue and flesh out how there might be an orderly, milestone-driven transfer of our Rita funds per a very clear set of expectations and rules from the town to Takah over time. And really that these, our Rita monies would probably be best used, ones Takah's actually not been operating, at least the vast majority of these funds would be best used for operating and maintenance support, since we know that that's often where art centers need additional fundraising and/or assistance in supplementing revenues available for operations and maintenance. So with that input and that direction from the meeting two weeks ago, we did a little more work and tried to summarize the key points in the three slides that I presented. Hopefully, you have those up on the screen. And this also helps to, I hope helps to explain the two pages of fairly dense numbers that are part of your council packet. So, as we see it really with this proposal, there's two types or uses of the Arts Rita. One is what we're calling date-driven reimbursements to Takah. This is really a continuation of what you've done over the last two or three years. So, as you know, there's a little bit less of the $230,000 that's been authorized in Resolution 41 last year. And so that would, you know, continue to be available for reimbursements until that fund or that allocation is tapped. And then, if you see fit to do so, there's this proposed $36,000 additional Arts Rita that would be available this year to help supplement the funds available for operations and programming during the peak season, including the pop-up program that I know that you've discussed. So again, this is more sort of a continued, a short, restricted continuation of the current arrangement. The much bigger new arrangement would be this milestone-driven transfer. And there's actually going to be several transfers and several types of transfers that I'll discuss in a moment. But it would be monies going from the town to an endowment trust. And I know we had a lot of discussion about a trust, and we really need to call it a trust. But what I really want to say is that a trust at its core, it's really just a third-party account holder that is following a mutually agreed set of rules and expectations and contractual terms between the town and Takah. So it doesn't need to be a really fancy, convoluted arrangement, but it's really more just so that both parties have the certainty and the clarity of how these transfers will happen and when, and then when Takah can actually access the funds. And so, I talked this over with Bernie as well, and I think, you know, we're okay. You don't have to call it a trust, but the idea is that, again, you have this third-party account holder that's sort of the middle person and the neutral party, making sure that everything is going according to the contract. So then, the last couple of bullets on this first slide, it's just really meant to convey that this trust is only released and/or converted to the Takah-held endowment at project completion. Okay? So if Takah doesn't reach or meet the milestones along the way, this trust is revocable and the funds would go back to the town's direct control. So all this would be spelled out, and you could always, you know, agree to either change the milestones or change the applicable dates down the road if you see fit to do so. But the goal is to, you know, avoid the need for future debate, for future reinvention of the wheel, and to feel like, okay, we're leaving this discussion in 2017 with a clear sense of expectations and how these funds, again, will be transferred and then used by Takah. Moving on to the second slide, again, why this endowment trust mechanism. I covered a few of these points already. But one key point, I think there was some confusion on this, is that right now, the Rita funds, although Judy, you know, accounts for the Arts Rita separate from the other Rita funds, they are commingled in one account under the town's control. And so right now, there isn't a separate Arts Rita account that both the town and Takah can point to and say, yep, that's the money we're talking about. The trust would give Takah and its donors, and we know that this has been a important point, some really clear certainty that if they meet the milestones, the town will live up to its end of the bargain and transfer the Arts Rita funds to the trust. And then also, as I alluded to, the terms of this partnership between the town and Takah would be decided for, you know, the next five years, and that's the estimated timeline to get to the project completion and the certificate of occupancy, but then also beyond. So again, it can always be changed by both parties, but we think that this framework will work on an ongoing basis, hopefully during a very long productive life of the Arts Campus. And finally, we believe that this type of concept or arrangement fairly balances both the town's and Takah's interests, and gives Takah the clearance and is to perform beneath those milestones, which are of course in his interest, but also in the town's interest. So then finally, and hopefully this was clear in the materials that were sent as part of your packet as well, but we really see four key milestones for these future milestone-driven Arts Rita transfers. So separate from the $36,000 that you may consider, the first type of milestone would be tied to fundraising. And so for each $1 million of binding pledges that Takah is able to secure, you would transfer $100,000 of Arts Rita to the endowment trust. And based on the current project budget, we think that Takah will need to raise and really have in hand, both in cash and truly binding pledges, at least $3,000, if not $4 million before it can access a construction loan for the remainder of the project budget. So that's why our documents refer to $4 million, and therefore, four individual $100,000 transfers to the trust. The second type of milestone would be, this is a technical term, a chunk of Arts Rita to the trust when Takah reaches the point of securing a building permit and can provide documentation that it has secured a construction loan that's adequate to fund the rest of the project. So that's really two key milestones that are related to each other. Susan had originally estimated or proposed starting this milestone calculation from a $1 million starting place, and my own analysis validated that, I think. I think that's a good number to work with. And as you probably saw, this calculation really yields, given the assumptions that we have, about $334,000 that would also go to the trust, not to Takah, but to the trust at this point in time. Also, based on the input that we got from Takah, and it seems like the town council might be comfortable with this, we know that Takah has an interest in accessing at least a limited amount of those funds during construction so that it can really do the operating and programming work it needs to during construction so it's ready to go out of the gate when the project is completed. We thought that 20% of that trust balance at the point of this, you know, meaningful transfer could potentially be available for draws for these operating and programming purposes. Of course, you know, the acceptable uses would have to be agreed upon, but we thought that this would make sense. And you might have seen in the cash flow that I did, that that 20% drop, you in theory would draw the trust balance down from $734,000, excuse me, down to about $587,000. Again, based on the assumptions that we've used. Finally, the biggest milestone most probably is where a certificate of completion, once they've successfully completed the project and are open for business, trustee, in lieu of the town's consent and sign off, would release the endowment trust at that point to Takah. So Takah would then have its own controlled endowment. And also, the town, assuming there was some Arts Rita balance in the town's Arts Rita fund, the town would sort of settle up at that point and transfer another chunk of Arts Rita, if you will, to the new Takah endowment at that point. And I would say that we think it's important for the town and Takah to negotiate some parameters for the use of those endowment funds, both, you know, for what purposes as well as how much. Because the last thing you want to do, and I, this wouldn't be into Takah's interest either, is to have, you know, a $1 million balance and then, or it to burn through in two or three years. And so, you know, whether it's 5% or something else, we think that it should be fairly doable to negotiate some parameters so that you're comfortable, yep, they've met the milestones all along the way to the completion of the project, and now we've got confidence that they'll use the Arts Rita dollars on an ongoing basis in a responsible way tied to operations and maintenance. And so then fundamentally, more of a housekeeping milestone, but one that would go on into the future, beyond the year 2022, that estimated date of completion, would be for the town to transfer Arts Rita funds. And we're suggesting on a semi-annual basis, but it seems reasonable, since they're going into an endowment that would only be utilized to a limited amount each year, we think that, you know, making transfers any more frequently than that is unnecessarily and is, you know, unnecessary busy work for the town. So the idea would be as long as Takah's in compliance with their mutual expectations with the town, the town would make these transfers to the Takah endowment going forward. So then finally, before I stop talking and take any questions, I did want to just draw your attention to the second page of my numbers. You know, the first page, again, just gives those two types of Rita availabilities, the date-driven and the milestone-driven, and hopefully those made sense. But the second page is new material, and it's really just to show you on a year-by-year basis how these Arts Rita milestones might be met. So you can see, we're assuming the starting balance of approximately $600,000 today, you know, net of the existing commitments that the town has for those Arts Rita funds. And then you can see how some additional funds might be transferred out in 2017, as well as new revenues coming in. And I would note that the new revenues, you can see that I go from $150,000 down to $125, down to $100, then down to a low point of $50,000 a year before going back up. I try to be conservative there. Hopefully, you know, as Willis continues to prosper and has commercial activity, or real estate activity, excuse me, in general, you'll see more robust Rita revenues, Arts, and therefore Arts Rita revenues, than what we're showing here. But as the graph on the bottom of this page illustrates, the Arts Rita collections, which is a half of the total Rita at Willis, you can see it's been very volatile and has, last year was a great year, $260,000 almost, but you can see there are years where it was a fraction of that. So that's really, let's be conservative, I hope, and show more modest numbers over the next six to seven years. But then finally, you can see just how the other key milestones that I just went through in that third PowerPoint slide would play out along with those new revenues, both the town fund, the endowment trust, and then finally, the Takah endowment. So you can see sort of that gradual transition from town-held funds to the trust-held funds to Takah-held funds. So with that, I hope that was helpful in giving you a sense of what we're talking about here, and I would be happy to take any questions.
And maybe before we take questions, just to kind of maybe circle back on what some of maybe of our goals were when we developed this. You know, one was to have kind of a set program, an organized way of how we were going to release the Rita funds. And kind of tied to that is this idea that, you know, we've spent about $230,000 with kind of getting Takah going and organizing, and we're suggesting that in terms of fundraising, that we continue that really through the summer, so we give them another $36,000. But then, the burden really goes back to them to fundraise for capital, for operations, and it's really at that point kind of turning it over to them and kind of demonstrating that they can meet these goals. And the other kind of, you know, kind of underlying theme that was there is that we want money for operations. You know, we've heard about all these cities that, you know, build these beautiful facilities, but they run through money to operate and come back to the city, and so we're trying to prevent that from happening. You'll see that again when we're trying to talk about maintenance of the building. And the other thing is really maybe to, you know, to really help Takah know when funds are going to be available, so it's kind of, you know, being organized on both sides. And, you know, you may not feel that we have the right targets, but I thought it might be helpful for you to kind of understand why we kind of came up with the things that we came up with. Bruce, did you want to add anything to that before we take questions?
Yeah, Susan, I'm really glad you made those points, because I did want to stress that first point you made about how this really clears the field for them to perform with clear expectations of what the town is willing to do if it is able to perform. You know, we know that there's a difference of opinions at the council level and in the community about how fast Takah will be able to achieve its objectives and its dream. We all, I think, want to see them succeed and think they have the opportunity to do that, but we also want to mitigate the town's risk, and I think we've done that. We've given them clearance to take off and to really soar, but they have to do that in order to access these additional funds. So hopefully, you agree that the town's and Takah's interest and sets a good framework for your partnership going forward.
Bruce? Bruce, can I start with a question? Can you, with your vast knowledge of the Town of Assault, can you please provide some other examples within the Town of Assault and partnerships with nonprofits, and how this arrangement and lease, or not so much the lease, but the sharing of finances?
Well, I mean, I think if I understood your question, Jen, correctly, the Arts Rita and Takah relationship is really different from ones you might have with RMI, or the Roaring Port Conservancy, or any of the many, many other nonprofits stakeholders that you have in the town, in part because, you know, one half of this Rita at Willis is designated to an arts use on this parcel. So of course, you can change that, but given those existing parameters, it's, I think, relatively unique in that you've got this dedicated funding source, and you're really trying to establish ground rules and mutual clear understandings as to how those will be utilized. So I might be unaware of something that is actually comparable, but I'm not thinking that there is something that's really a similar situation to this Takah partnership.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we did talk, and I got pretty clear, but I do have another question on this page two, on that issue, building permit number two, proposed milestone calculations. And, you know, I understand the part above, which shows Takah meeting their $1 million pledge in a certain to-be-termined year, and that we then transfer out of the Rita trust into the Takah, and that's really the key, is when it transfers out of this trust into the Takah Foundation and under their control as a board of directors and not as city council. So that's where the rubber meets the road in the funding.
Right, and so just to be clear, that would be a certificate of occupancy and not building permit?
It would be what?
That would, that transfer to Takah control would happen as certificate of occupancy, not the building permit.
All right, but it says that building permit...
Building permit, building permit still under the trust.
Yeah, that's what I'm having trouble understanding.
That's just more money into the trust.
It shows $334,000, and then it shows...
But that's still going to, right, I'm sorry.
But then it shows a cumulative $734,000 in the endowment trust for Takah.
In the trust?
Yeah, in the endowment, in the endowment. The trust, it says net new transfer to endowment, and we're getting confused by calling that an endowment trust. We have the trust, and the money goes out of the city's trust into the Takah endowment, which at that point, their board of directors has complete control of.
No, you're wrong.
No, I'm wrong.
No, and that's where maybe we need some different words. The endowment trust is that third-party-held, that neutral-party-held account, where it's really under the control of the contractual relationship. So when I say town-Takah endowment trust, I'm meaning it's because it's pro this, you know, multi-party agreement where neither party really has direct access to the funds, and they can only be dispersed, you know, per the contract.
Okay, is this...
Bernie, I like your idea of calling the Takah, what I had in the third column of the Takah endowment, maybe you'd call that the Takah Foundation.
Right.
Where you changed the name of the trust to something else, because, yeah, I don't want any confusion between those two things. They are different animals, different mechanisms.
Right. One thing that might help you, Bernie, is when the money goes over to Takah, there's still rules about the use of those funds. So by way of example, there might be that you have to have a minimum balance, or that you have to set a certain amount aside for capital replacement, et cetera.
Check my understanding. My understanding was that we put money in the trust, but it's not in the foundation, in the trust, but it's not irrevocable until certain points are established. And so that if they don't meet those certain requirements, it is not an irrevocable trust, it is a revocable trust. That was my understanding when we talked.
Let me be, let's not...
And that's right. And I would say, actually, I mean, we talked about revocable or irrevocable. I mean, in some ways, when they meet the milestone of the certificate of occupancy, in some ways, it becomes irrevocable, irrevocable, excuse me, because it's released from the trust to Takah's control, if you will, albeit with the parameters that Susan just mentioned. That said, if Takah defaults, and if there's still monies available in their endowment or their foundation, or whatever it's end up to be called, you know, I think it would be appropriate to say that the town would have claim to reclaim those monies, even if, you know, this default happens five years after the open. And of course, kind of a hope for that, but I think you would have, and Tom Smith, of course, would have to be the one to figure out what the legal basis is, to reclaim those funds from, you know, a foreclosure-type situation. But I would say that, you know, you would still have some claim to get those monies back to the extent that there are funds available.
Just...
Hold on, I have a comment on this.
Yeah, let's go.
So instead of getting hung up on terminology like revocable and irrevocable, Bernie, if you look at this, I think what Bruce and Susan both are saying, at building permit, the transfer is to the endowment, and Takah does not have unilateral access to those funds at that time, okay? At, during construction and before occupancy, they may draw up to 20% of that amount, okay? That means they get the money, the 20%. Then at CO, it says town releases endowment trust to Takah, the balance of the funds. So up until that time, the, if the, if as Bruce says, we set it up with a third-party holder of the funds, there will be an agreement with that third party, whether it's a bank or an individual, however we decide to do it, that identifies when they are allowed to release funds to Takah and when they're not. So if the conditions for release aren't satisfied, the money stays in the trust, and if the trust, as we're calling it, gets terminated, the money would go back to the town.
That's basically my understanding, using a different terminology.
Right, okay, just want to be clear.
Okay. Anyone else, questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So I'm still trying to digest all of this, but could we do it in a way in which, instead of there being automatic transfers, and still trying to understand, we need to go through the parameters in which we would allow the funds to be released from the Takah endowment, could we do something where it's a granting process every year, with all of the parameters that the grant can only be established for O and M, but through a grant process, we would be able to obtain current financial information, understand what Takah is doing, and have a strong reporting relationship between the council making a decision or the Rita being released? Could that ease, I don't know if that ties into what you're trying to get at, but...
I'm satisfied with Bruce's answer and this illustration, that it does give us enough control until these milestones are reached, so that even though we're putting money in the trust, the trust, it's not automatically spent, it's subject to parameters of achievement and limitations by Takah, and when they meet them, they get access to them. So I'm satisfied by this approach.
And there will be, there will be a document, an agreement, that specifies with exactly how the, what determinations have to be made in order for the funds to be released to Takah. So that's another step in this whole arrangement.
I have a question for Bruce and Judy, and this came up in our last finance committee meeting regarding projections, future projections in all Rita's, and what our five-year financial plan is and what it looks like. And something that I'm questioning, that we do not have the information on, is what is the projection of the Willis Town Center, Sopris Meadows Rita for the next five years?
Well, Bruce, did you put that on your page two?
Yes, although I would say that that was purely hypothetical.
This was a history, it's not the projection.
Right, it's a history.
It's not a projection.
I don't have a good sense of how those cycles work, and you can see that it's been extremely variable. I'll be with a, you know, a great recession in the middle few years of that 12- or 13-year span. Jen, I think what I would say is that, you know, actual numbers, of course, will be different from what I showed in my hypothetical cash flow example from 2017 through 2023, I think it was. But per this framework, the town will never have to transfer monies that it doesn't have available in terms of Arts Rita funds, okay? So even when you do that calculation at the point of the building permit, and that chunk, as I called it, that would go to the trust, you've still that third-party trust at that point in time, if there's not enough money to do that calculation, net of what you've already put into the trust... you've already put into the trust, and so on and so forth, you know, you don't, you don't put any more money in and so on and so forth, after that point, you're only putting in monies on a, what we would otherwise call a pay as you go basis. So we feel like this is an appropriate way of, of, you know, having clear guidelines that both parties can follow, but with the understanding that if the monies aren't there, the monies aren't there and there's no additional obligation on the town's part to somehow come up with more money.
So I asked that question in the proposition of, let's just imagine in, in my crystal globe in front of me, it does feel like a recession is in the future, that's whatever length of time, but let's say that there is an arts organization that is functioning within the building and their donor base, their endowment dries up, this has occurred to other arts organizations in the valley, nonprofits across the board, and there is no longer any funds in the Rita and the nonprofit is struggling to, this is doomsday, is struggling to make ends meet and they come to the town to ask for financial assistance. Would it not be wise for the town to not release all of the funds, but to keep a 20% for a rainy day?
That's truly a policy call, I can see that. On the other hand, I think it's really a negotiation point with CAC. You know, one thing I did want to say, and this is to Katie's point, is that we do think that any partnership agreement should have annual reporting with real financials and real discussions of how the previous fiscal year went, what are the opportunities, what are the challenges, how does CAC, do its programming evolve over time and for, you know, the town to have an opportunity to give some collaborative input in those meetings. And, and also, you know, as I made, as I made the point in terms of that so-called fourth milestone for the ongoing releases after, after the project is completed, you know, those again are only as long as CAC performs to expectation and you could also have an early warning trigger. We could come up with some ideas where if, if, you know, they start really having financial difficulties, you might actually then institute or implement a holdback like you suggested, Jen. But if they're doing great, right, and if they're meeting the metrics and if this is just turning out to be a fantastic vibrant entity, then there's not a reason for those holdbacks. So I don't have triggers in mind, but those are very common and we could easily come up with one that I don't think would be onerous for either party to monitor and that could, again, be an early warning in a way to say, hey, we're gonna, you know, at least temporarily hold some monies back if CAC starts to get into trouble, you know, two, three, four years after operating, after opening, excuse me.
Okay.
So we can certainly come back to you with more ideas on that, if that would be of interest.
Is everyone else?
Yes, I think we should maintain some type of balance.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Well, thank you.
And Bruce, if you have any examples of other agreements besides this one that you have drafted that are functioning and that have examples of years out that are public, if you could share that with us, that would be very helpful for me to become more comfortable with the agreement.
Well, I don't have any on the draft off the top of my head, but I can certainly ask some colleagues, do some research and see what, what could be applicable.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Well, thanks for letting me go first, everyone, I really appreciate it.
No problem.
Are you gonna close off, Bruce?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thanks.
Okay, so where do you want to go next?
Well, I kind of have this written, although we don't have to be this formal, of, you know, are you okay with these different points? If you remember what we're gonna do next, I mean, we can either have a work session or we can bring back some draft agreements. So maybe some feedback about what you guys would like to see as far as next steps, but I thought maybe I'd just kind of take you through some of these questions and you could just do a thumbs up. You know, the first question really was on the $36,000, if you guys were okay with us bringing back a supplemental budget to allocate another $36,000 to CAC. So that was kind of the first question.
From the Rita?
From the, yes. And we were not talking about the Sopris Meadows Rita at the last meeting, you know, we kind of brought up the Sopris Meadows Rita, we're not having that discussion. This would be from the same Willets Arts Rita, the same portion.
Okay.
What is the monthly operating cost approximately of CAC and assuming they have 40,000 in untapped funds from our 230,000 commitment and we give them another 36,000, how many more months operating leeway would they have?
So when we gave you that 40,000 last month, there was a couple invoices that weren't processed in that. So basically, right now, they have $12,600 left on that amount of funding. So that would kind of take them a little bit into July, so cover their June invoice. You know, their average invoices are, you know, around 11, $12,000 is about their monthly expenses. So we figured that it would take them kind of through September. So it would take them, the idea was to get them through the summer and just say, okay, this is the big fundraising time. They've also got money that they're trying to raise for the temporary because the Rita funds can't come be used for that. So let's give them, let's give them a, you know, a reasonable amount of money to take them through the summer and then we're cutting off the operating funds out. That was the simple kind of methodology behind that, not too complicated.
I'd just like to express that the work session questions are not in the packet and we have some, we have an agreement with staff and likewise, for no surprises, and this feels, I'm surprised, I wasn't expecting these questions.
Oh, I'm just sorry, I was, I just thought it was a way of kind of working through, we don't have to use those, it was just kind of a way of doing a check on the things that we presented at the meeting, so we don't have to use it, it was just a way of, of trying to organize the information, just to kind of do a checking. So if you guys would like to have a free form kind of conversation on what you heard today, that, that's fine too.
Well, let's get back to what Bruce did. I mean, basically, I'd love to see if we have at least agreement on moving forward with this trust agreement, knowing that it's going to come back to us with examples and, you know, potentially some triggers. Anyway, so then let's get back to Bruce's thing since we just discussed it. Are we okay with moving forward on this trust dream and idea to come back to us with, you know, some tweaks to it and some examples and some triggers since we talked about? Is everyone clear on that?
I think that, oh, sorry. I think that we brought up, and Bruce brought up, a lot of questions that need to be addressed. So I'm fine having another conversation that digs into this deeper.
Do you want to do it in a work session, not have a specific motion ready to go at a regular meeting?
I guess it would depend on what is provided at that point.
Let's see, anyone else?
I'd, I'd, I mean, I don't, this isn't super surprising to me, this list of questions and I, I agree that we should, you know, you should bring us a proposal that includes a lot of that and move forward. I think it should happen at a council session just because we've had a lot of work sessions, so, but I don't mind exploring those issues you brought up at the council session.
You can always continue it, right?
Yeah, you can always continue. So we're okay with bringing this back to a periodic new council session once Bruce and CAC and everybody and staff get, you know, the necessary information together?
Can I just ask to get some clarity, the additional items you're requesting are comparable agreements or similar?
If you move closer, is the.
Is it closer?
Yeah.
I was following Gary's lead. Comparable agreements to the Rita that you're seeking and Katie, what other additional information are you seeking, just so I'm clear?
Well, I want to dig into, I understand when the, when the money moves basically from an endowment trust account, which is 100% controlled by the town, then it moves into a CAC endowment or whatever we choose to call it, and it's still controlled by the town, but it's kind of like an escrow fund, I guess you could say. I want to talk about when we release those fees or when we release the Rita from that fund, deeply understanding exactly what it can be used for and like what I'm describing when it comes to a grant. A grant would provide us the opportunity to understand CAC and their financial condition, to know whether, hey, you're doing incredible, your fundraising is awesome and you had a net income of half a million dollars, yeah, you could use some money, but we feel really comfortable, or whoa, hey, things are not going as planned, maybe we should give you something to help you, but maybe we need to be looking at conserving whatever percentage it is in that, the fund that's going to be our cushion for the rainy day.
I think.
And so it's, it's an opportunity for the town to understand where CAC is at and dig in with your financials and your fundraising.
I think some of that work was done last summer after the finance committee meeting we had, we, you guys requested a third party audit of our finances and working with that third party consultant and Judy, we set up a reporting mechanism and we, we've opened our books up to you and I report those annually and then certainly we'd have an annual report.
Right, but I'm just discussing that every year before we're just like, hey, this money is yours, that there's like a grant, I'm calling it a grant conversation in which you apply for the funds and we talk about where you are as an organization.
I would say I'm 100% open to and would expect to provide financial information to you as a major donor to the organization, as I would with any major donor. I think the idea of having to come back and apply each year is problematic for our donors, for perception, for other grants that we're, for, for formal grants that we're going after, that's a red flag. It's, the parameters that Bruce and Susan have outlined give us clear benchmarks that if we meet, we receive the funds and if we have to come back and apply every year, that creates a problem and a red flag for other donors. So I'm expecting to provide you with a great detail of information about our operations and our finances, but I would give pause at the idea of applying every year.
Do you want something more than a trigger?
Yes, and I want to understand what Bruce is describing as triggers. And we need to maintain a cushion in this fund and not just keep handing it over and handing it over. And I want to talk about clawback, how we could potentially clawback funds based on, I mean, I think you need to understand my perspective is that this is, this is a huge obligation on the town and if you succeed, it's wonderful. Like the town doesn't have any financial implications, but if for some reason this does not succeed, this is devastating to the town and our taxpayers. So I'm gonna have to operate from the point of, of being really circumspect and preparing for this not to go to perfection. So what I would be interested in is a clawback for the failure of the organization, what happens if they don't meet mission, what happens if there's some type of malfeasance within the organization, like those clawback options for the town.
I think when you get some examples for, from other places that have done this, I think we can delve into how they have addressed those issues of what happens when it doesn't go as planned. I think that would be, for me, that personally would just be, hey, I'd love to see that, just how you put that in agreement, just to say, if it doesn't go as planned, how do we, as a town, really figure out how to reprogram the space and because there's gonna be paybacks and all this other stuff. I just, I think just clarifying that is a good thing. And anyone else?
I'd like to see, maybe working with Judy and Bruce, going back to the projection on the Rita funds and how that affects your operating costs and what you, seeing what, how the Rita funds and the granting process correlate with CAC's future.
The way it's spelled out here, it's a true, I mean, it's a true endowment, so it's spinning off closer, you say, right, closer?
Supposedly, that's what, that's what grassroots has told us.
I want to try some distance.
Yeah.
It would be set up as an endowment, so it's spinning off 5% a year for operations, so, and Bruce has laid out those numbers, so if there was.
Where, where the CAC fund, where, excuse me, where the Rita funds are projected to go and the balance that is going to be in there and how CAC is going to function with a zero or a very low, you know, there's years where you see that $7,000 and if CAC is gonna get 5% of $7,000, that's a huge impact.
Sure, I mean, in the, in the grand scheme of things, the projections now are that it's spinning off $45,000 a year, which is a fairly small portion of our operating costs per year. And if there were several years in a row of zero contributions to the Rita and let's say a tank in the investment funds, it went down by 20%, which is something that I've experienced at other nonprofits that I've worked at, you face that fiscal reality. But certainly the operating model that's being proposed here and we've been proposing is not that we take the Rita funds each year that come in and spend them. This, this endowment will grow, certainly there'll be some recessions, but over time you will see this, this endowment grow and it's set up in a way that ensures that as much as possible over time.
And then as well, I'd, I'd like to see what, what, what CAC has proposed as of draft November 2015, revenue source, the Rita draw being $65,000 annually and what, what does it look like? We, we see a, an example here of the $100,000 for every 1 million raised. I'd be curious to see what other numbers look like. And then as well, besides there just being number of financial milestones, what the additional programming milestones are, not so much programming, but where, beyond where you are in the project bids and how that exactly correlates to the design process, the permitting and receiving CO.
I think on, I think if I understand your question correctly, I think to get into programming benchmarks or design benchmarks, you know, we've got a board of directors that have professional skills that cover those things. I have a background in nonprofit management that covers those things and I think I would ask that you, you know, let us do that work and I'm happy to share our outcomes with you.
So I'm, I'm asking for if, to have that part of the contract and have that part of the agreement of have that involved in the paperwork so that there is both sides of meeting of what the, what the agreed terms are.
I guess I would, I'm, I understand what those would look like.
We have it with the Roaring Fort Conservancy that programming will be in the schools. There's, there's an outline, a set outline of what the, beyond what the mission is, what they are going to accomplish within the partnership.
I think some of those are already in the lease, which we'll talk about later today and, you know, we're open to those conversations. I will say that, you know, educational programming for me is a, is a priority for our organization. I mean, obviously we need to get off the ground and begin programming and, and get our business model running, but educational programming is critically important for, to build the next generation of audiences, artists and of donors, so that's something that we're committed to doing and I think, but again, I, I think it's good to have those broad goals specifically set in stone as milestones could be problematic because you need to be able to adjust to the fiscal realities on the ground and what you can and cannot do.
You know, I think Bruce's proposal is solid and it has checks and balances in it and what I'm worrying about is how much due diligence is on us at the town and how much of this responsibility is on CAC. And at some point, most of the people that I've talked to in Willets want this to happen. They, the money is allocated to this group and they want to see it go forward and at some point our fiscal responsibility ends. some point, our fiscal responsibility ends, and we give the money to them, and if they screw it up and lose the money, we took a risk on an ambitious arts venture. So I'm worried that we're putting so many obstacles in front of this project in the name of fiscal due diligence, that it'll never happen, and so I'm trying to find that balance between what's our fiscal responsibility, and at what point that they just have to go under certain constraints that I think are pretty decent, based on what Bruce has presented.
Bernie?
I'm very uncomfortable taking that level of risk for the town. We are not doing this for the 125 residents of Willets. We are doing this for the whole town, and we want it to succeed for the whole town, and it's being built for the whole town, and operated for the whole town. If this, if they get this thing built, and their operating estimates are too optimistic, and they can't support it, then the town ends up owning a building that may not be profitable to operate. And do we just walk away from it at that time, or is that an ongoing lasting liability, both capital-wise and operating-wise? So I think we should take every precaution and prudence. I'm not sure, I feel I need to go as far as Katie does. I am comfortable with the trust arrangement as it is. I have other concerns, but that's just to answer your question. Then, two things, one thing Susan said, I want to be sure I'm clear on, that after we give them this $36,000, and at the end of the summer, they are assumed to be self-operating on their own funds.
Correct, until building permit, which at that time they did-
Or until they raise a million dollars, in which case, we put 100,000.
But it's not until building permit that they, again, get to use the money for operating.
Okay. The, my question then is to Ryan. To my knowledge, you've only raised 33,000 roughly in cash for some higher expenses, and you've got two pledges for 300. How confident are you that you can get a cash flow necessary, 12,000 or 14,000 a month, that you'll be able to continue operating on your own?
Yeah, I'll say this, we've had a very successful couple of months fundraising for the temporary. It's been really exciting and invigorating to have a clear goal and a clear project in mind, and donors have been responding to that. The point of the temporary is to create a place where we can create experiences for donors, and for the community to be galvanized around this project. So I have run the numbers a lot of different ways, a lot of different scenarios, but I'm, the board and I are very confident that we can make this work.
Okay, now, how long will the temporary, how many performances, and how long would you anticipate your first season running?
Well, we don't intend to close it. It's not going to be a season, it's going to be open. We intend to do 10 to 12 performances a year. Now, keep in mind, some of those are-
A month.
Sorry, a month, thank you, thank you. Some of those will be movies, some of those will be lectures, they won't all be large performances, but a mix of 10 to 12 per month, and potentially scaling that up as we get our sea legs, if you will. But ideally, we would like to have the temporary open, and if the temporary be programming right up until we move into the new building, so we can have a seamless transition from an interim home to a permanent home.
We only have like eight minutes to eat and come back to the next one, so I think, you know, are you clear enough with what this is to bring it back for another discussion? And if we're not comfortable, you can continue it, but I think if you can bring it back, get more clarity on some of these, where the trigger points are, and we can have a further discussion on it, and then also, if Ryan can bring back some of the programming pieces on how you expect to live beyond the $36,000, that would be helpful at the next meeting. Does everyone agree with that?
Yep, and one more thing. Can you provide your 990s?
Sure, yeah.
I haven't been able to find them, they're unpublished.
Certainly, yeah, I will send it to you.
Well, thank you. We'll be back in about seven minutes.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes, I'll call the meeting to order at 6:05. We'll call meetings.
Certainly. Katie Schwer. Here. Auden Chandler.
Here.
Jennifer Ruckel.
Here.
Kittle.
Here.
Jackie Witsen.
This is going to have a move.
Janet Tenma.
Here.
And Bernie Grauer is-
Here.
on May 31st.
Here, thank you, Bernie.
It's a Wednesday evening, the tabletop mud and flood emergency, I'm spacing the word.
Well, thank you. And the next up is the consent agenda, from the minutes of special meeting on April 4th,
Tabletop exercise.
Exercise, that's it, exercise.
April 21st, and a regular meeting on May 9th, and we also have a continuation to June 3rd,
I think that exercise is like building muscles, but this is a tabletop exercise for the mud
2017, a public hearing and an ordinance to repeal and readopt portions of Chapter 18
and flood, and it's important for us policymakers to be there to reenact, or to enact, what
Building Regulations of the Municipal Code in order to implement the 2015 International
it will be like, and this is something that is going in partnership with Eagle County,
Codes.
Mayor Protem, I move the Town Council approve the consent agenda as published.
Pittkin County, Boyd, so many people have been working all together, Chief Not, Chief
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So we're just, the building regulations and municipal code just aren't ready?
Thompson, of coming together to make this happen, and please put it on your calendar.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Well, now we're on council comments.
I will email you the exact times, but it's important, if you've gone to the ICS training,
Pardon?
Yeah, I sent Dylan Johnson email with a question about the Albany-Kittle parcel,
this is an actual practicum of that as well.
urban growth boundary, and he responded saying, this was an application that had come
So that was part of the, this is what happens when I don't write down what it is that I
in before, had been approved, some changes were made. That was the substance of our exchange.
was going to talk about.
You're just disclosing that to us.
What's the date of the mud and flood?
31st.
The 31st, May 31st. And Basalt Emergency Management Committee, we had a meeting, and just kudos to all the different agencies and what they're doing with all of the construction, roundabouts, the roads, the actual facilities, construction, everyone's busy, and that's all looking good and on track. And I want to commend Davis for working with the Whitewater Park, and having, considering having an opening in June, as well as collaborating with the, with Public Works and rafting outfits for trees that have been down in the river, and making it a partnership and collaborating together for the safety of our entire community. So, thank you.
I got it. Mr. Mayor, Bruce?
Last Wednesday, I met with Eagle County, Pittkin County, and the Forest Service about the Elgavell Forest Service tree farm, and as many people might know, the Forest Service is in the process of an environmental analysis to get rid of the federal ownership of that tree farm. And at that meeting, Jill Ryan was there, I was there, Larry Two-Pats is both the director of Open Space and Town Council, but they had the Eagle County Open Space Director, Eagle County Housing Director, George Newman was there from the VOCC, and at that meeting, what was came out clearly was the Forest Service is moving forward with the EA to get rid of that parcel. And I can bring more, we'll bring more information, we'll definitely get more information about that, but one of the big pieces is there's a river parcel, and there's an upland parcel. And so the river parcel, the Forest Service is going to put a lot of restrictions on that really make it certain that it will always be a public access place, and will be conserved. However, the other piece is up for discussion, because they have many different ways to go about, you know, disposing of that piece of parcel. So Eagle County has been very interested in working with the Town of Basalt on this. I think this is a perfect discussion, because I talked about it with Jill Ryan afterwards, is why we need to move forward sooner than later on a joint master planning process with Eagle County. The Uke County VOCC is on board, they're having a new Community Development Director come on board within the next month, and so I just want to ask council to keep this on a high priority, because Eagle County wants to make it one of their big priorities, because they're also redoing the entire land use code for Eagle County over the next year. So, you know, I want to make sure that we are all on board to do this joint master planning with Eagle County, if Eagle County is coming forward, because whatever happens to the other tree farm, you know, this tree farm piece, you know, the housing, Eagle County housing has looked at it, but they don't want to put something that the community doesn't want. The Uke County Commissioners have admitted that their master plan is not meeting their current citizens' needs, and so ours is from 2007, we need an update on ours too, so I want to keep that on board, and I want everyone hopefully be on board with that.
Yeah, and to bolster that, at this climate meeting last week in Aspen, Jill Ryan was there, and the topic came up, and one idea was, hey, this doesn't have to be a three-year nightmare project, let's bang it out. Like, who says it has to be a really lengthy thing? It's not that complicated, let's get it done, because one of the, a lot of the things we're fighting as council are conflicts with what we believe the master plan should be versus what the actual master plan is. So let's bring it into alignment, it's going to make our lives and the lives of developers and others easier.
I would echo that. I think it's really critically important, and Eagle County's had some staff changeover, so they're filling spots, and I've been a little frustrated in keeping that hot, that iron hot, so I think this conversation needs to carry through, and when the new manager comes on board, that will also be transferred to the new manager. So, that's critical. The Climate Community Summit was an awesome event last Friday, and it was inspiring. Auden signed the commitment document, and we'll be talking to you more about that. And today, Public Works, I want to commend them for pulling the tree out of the river that was in below the Whitewater Park. We were going to go out two weeks ago and cut it, and then the next day, the rafting community went in and trimmed most of it, but left the main trunk, and Larry and Boyd were down there today, and were able to get a backhoe in there and pull the thing out. So, we got an open channel, and kudos to those guys.
And they probably had fun doing that.
I think they had fun doing it. Well, now, it's the Nick and GR Show on the Underpass.
Thanks, Gary. I'm GR Fielding, I'm the county engineer for Pittkin County, but I'm acting as your resident engineer for the Basalt Underpass Project, and I'm here with Nick Sen, the project engineer. We've got a bit of an update, it's been a little while before we've sat before you, and we've been progressing pretty nicely on the project. I'll do probably the first update, and then Nick will take over. Last time we talked, we just discussed a highly technical concrete issue called delayed intrigite formation, and we've worked past that on the project, we've hired the experts needed, and who've opined that it's not going to be an issue for the lid slabs on, and so since then, we've also placed the south side lid slabs on top of the underpass, and so now we have a underpass that goes all the way across the highway, and so you can actually physically most of the time, unless there's work going on inside of it, walk through it now from one side of the project to the other. So, the contractor has been really getting after it the last few weeks, they've been making good progress, and I think Nick can handle more on the schedule.
Yeah, so in general, I would say that we switch traffic on St. Patty's Day, and we've actually, and we were a couple of weeks behind schedule when we made the switch. I think we've already caught up those two weeks, that we were behind schedule, we might be in front of that now. We've been working with United, they're a highly recommended contractor, I know GR is working with them on some county projects as well, and we might, we don't want to put anything into stone yet, but they've realized that they want to actually get the pedestrians out of the intersection to make the intersection work more efficient for them, and so we're working really hard right now to get the underpass open a little bit earlier than we anticipated, to get pedestrians essentially out of the way, so they can tear up the road and have equipment, cars, which are easier to deal with than having kids and people walking through the middle of the intersection all the time. So, we're working hard to actually make that, you know, path a viable connection for town here sooner than later.
What is sooner than later?
Well-
I won't hold you to it. It's a public fight.
We're obligated to have that ready for school, no matter what. And so I think we might be able to beat that by several weeks to maybe a month, depending on how we can flip-flop the scheduling. So, you know, in the middle of summer, what we're hoping is that we can have people in the box, and out of all that paving, and signal work, and tearing up the roads to get it all in the right alignments, and so I think that'll be a good thing, and they've finally realized that too, that one of the biggest headaches is pedestrians in the middle of the works out, so.
Well, I took the run this morning from the recycle, saw the bus, ran it the entire way to get that bus, and I will be so happy if I don't have to wait for that really fun light.
But safe, yes, but yes, it is a long cycle through that light. In general, the next steps that you'll see us doing, as GR said, the tops are on, most of the major walls are poured, so we'll be waterproofing and backfilling the box in the next few weeks. They'll start working out of the box and putting the trail together, and again, because they're switching gears, I think they're going to work on more of the finished things down at the bottom, so they're working on landscaping irrigation in the underpass itself, and then they want to concentrate in the heat of the summer up on the roadwork, which will be good. In general, we also have a public information system, I don't know if you guys have seen all the signs, it's at the town's website. So far, we've had like, I think, three calls in the last three months, so things have definitely settled down after the last traffic switch, and we're not getting angry motorists or angry users of the intersection, which is healthy, but if you guys are hearing from constituents, problems, anything like that, please, direct them to the hotline number that's posted on the highway, or the town websites, where we have some information there, and the direct links to ask questions, or, you know, service up complaints if they happen. Of those three calls, some of them have still been confused about what's happening with the pushing of the highway back and forth, and so our information company has actually got an animation that they're going to put on the town website that just kind of explains why the highway gets shoved one way and then shoved back, and what happens in the middle. So, it seems to be a reoccurring question, so they thought that would be a good way to convey the information, so that should be up this week on your website. Overall, I would say that, again, we're catching up from where we were, schedule and budget look really good on the project, and things are looking relatively well, and we also think we're out of our major risks. We're not having water problems, we haven't found any dinosaur bones in the highway, or Indian burial grounds, or anything exciting, so fingers crossed, things are looking good for the end of the project. So, do you guys have any questions while we're here?
Cool.
Yes, sir.
Point of information for the council, Nick and Judy and I met the other day and talked about the budget situation out there, and we will be bringing information to the Finance Committee on the 8th of June, and then to the council on the 16th of June. So, stay tuned. Any other questions? June 13th, I'm sorry. Cool, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one more mayor comment. I forgot to thank Grassroots TV for being here and broadcasting the meeting live, and so you can view tonight's meeting live and previous council meetings at grassrootstv.org.
the pushing of the highway back and forth. And so our information company has actually got an animation that they're gonna put on the town website that just kind of explains why the highway gets shoved one way and then shoved back and what happens in the middle. So, it seems to be a reoccurring question, so they thought that would be a good way to convey the information. So, that should be up this week on your website. Overall, I would say that, again, we're catching up from where we were, schedule and budget look really good on the project and things are looking relatively well. And we also think we're out of our major risks, we're not having water problems, we haven't found any dinosaur bones in the highway or Indian burial grounds or anything exciting, so fingers crossed things are looking good for the end of the project. So, do you guys have any questions while we're here?
Cool.
Yes, sir.
Point of information for the council, Nick and Judy and I met the other day and talked about the budget situation out there and we will be bringing information to the Finance Committee on the 8th of June and then to the council on the 16th of June. So, stay tuned. Any other questions? June 13th, I'm sorry. Cool, thank you guys.
Thank you.
I got one more mayor comment, I forgot to thank Grassroots TV for being here and broadcasting the meeting live. And so you can view tonight's meeting live and previous council meetings at grassrootstv.org. And our videographer this evening is Chris Hansen. Hi, Chris. You're not screaming at us about talking in the mic. Okay, good. And there is no Mayor's Coffee tomorrow, I gotta go to work and Jackie's out of town, so, sorry about that, but we'll get that back on for the next council meeting. So, next up is citizen comments for items not on the agenda and items added after the agenda deadline. Is there any citizen comments? Jonah?
Hi, everybody, it's Jen Mo from the Art Base, just a few quick points. I wanted to say that I don't think it's on the agenda because there was some late emulating going on, but I did receive a word from our board that we did agree with Ryan Honey's suggested language change in paragraph five, so when you guys get there, our board agrees, so thank you. And an art talk on June 1st at 5:30 PM, the exhibiting artist Catherine Rosain will talk about her work. And then we have a full lineup of summer art classes and we have several scholarship opportunities available if you know anyone, any kids that would like to take art camps. And we have a scholarship application also available in Spanish, so if anyone would help promote, we'd greatly appreciate that. And there are also internship opportunities for middle school students. And on a personal note, I wanted to express my support for the Roy and Fort Club, I've been so impressed with their values and philanthropic support of nonprofits in the area, so that's what I have to say as an individual. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jonah.
Anyone else have a comment? Not, close public comments. And the first up for council considerations is to fire board presidents of Snowmass and Basalt.
It's what it says, yeah.
I know.
We got it. Those of us that see the agenda...
I just enjoyed the way it was written. Fire the board president.
Fire the board.
Sorry, Scott.
Hi, guys. Hello there. Introduce myself, I'm Bill Bueno, some of you may know me, I used to have a seat up in Snowmass and as mayor and council members, but I've also been on a seat at the Snowmass Wildcat Fire Protection District as a board member for too long, it seems, but 24 years as a volunteer. We also have Ed Van Walraven, did you guys all know Ed, and Chief Scott Thompson. The impetus for us being here is to talk a little bit about what the fire districts are doing. Let me go back a few years, about three years ago, our fire chief in Snowmass, Chief Solz, left town. And after being involved in a number of, oh, fire chief searches and stuff over the years and personnel searches when I was on the town board in Snowmass and Raft and a few other things I've been involved in, I sort of approached Scott about, is there something that the two fire districts, which abut each other, can do a little bit differently? Can we partake of, Scott, if the fire board in Basalt would allow it, to help us move down the road in enhancing our services and having somebody in the valley who really knows the system, knows the communities, knows what the, you know, the needs are without hiring somebody from the outside? Because as we've all found, it can be a little different for people who come to this valley and don't really understand the dynamics that go along. So Scott and I talked and the boards talked and we came to an agreement, let's try a trial balloon of trying to use these districts with one administrative group, one type of program that might be something that a lot of the communities we've been watching over the years are doing in other areas of the country. The consolidations, fire authorities are joining regionally. And I guess, I'll continue on with my mayor hat, one of the best times I felt using my time in this community was working under Rafta as a joint regional group. I just felt we got so much stuff done, making the bike trails happen, all sorts of things together because we recognize that there are a lot of needs that we have which are shared and why do we continue spending money on administration when we can join some of those things and try to save some resources? Because we're, you know, as time goes, money's not growing on trees like we all hoped it would be. So Scott and I and the fire board in Snowmass and Basalt got together and I guess I should take a moment to specifically tell you who the fire board members are. So, after this conversation, you all or the communities can talk to these people and I ask a little bit more. Your fire board in Basalt are President Ed here, Leroy DeRoe, John Young, Vonda Williams and Mark Kittle are all part of the, the people who, you know, drive the policies and make things work up there, here. In Snowmass, it's myself, Bill Bueno, then I have Donna Aiken, Brian Olson, Irene Greiser and Wolf Ginch. Besides us that are running this thing, we have a lot of individuals who are carrying the weight day to day, the firefighters, the paramedics, the EMTs, the office people. And so we're trying to figure out, how do we make this group work well together? And with Scott Thompson here, we, Chief Thompson, we really felt that he could be the one who knows the valley, he's been around, he started his career off some 35, 37 years ago in Snowmass as a volunteer firefighter. And he's moved on, he's grown. I wouldn't wanna say he's gone downhill, but you know, we've all gone a little bit downhill over time. But anyway, this is not a thing that we need to make light of, this is a process that we've been working on very slowly and methodically for the past three years. We've recently come to the thought of, what about a fire authority? And I'll let Scott talk a little bit about what fire authorities are and the pros of that kind of stuff. But we're here to ask you to think of questions, to get back to us so we can go and answer those for you and then have the community come to us also. Because we recognize that regionalizing these kind of services, which are always gonna be needed, are a very important step and maybe a good way to go, but we're not final yet on that, we're still working on those things. Scott and Ed?
So I guess the easy way to explain this is the districts will not be dissolved, they're still gonna be in place financially, they still need to set budgets, set mill levies, but they will put pool of money together to fund the authority. And the true reason for us doing an authority is financial and operational efficiencies, it's just as simple as that. And what we've done over the last three years is just picked off the low hanging fruit, the things, we don't want anybody to lose their job, but with less administration, that puts more people on the streets for the paramedics and firefighters. We're still gonna keep our volunteer core, the authority, we really believe it will have a better buying power, move our people around, so there's a lot of efficiencies that we see in this. And really, to go back to day one, I'm sure many of you know Shirley Tipton, she began with Basalt Fire in Carbondale, putting, we were talking about consolidation there. That due to finances did not work out, but we were, you know, the same, we were going down the same avenue, same roads. So Shirley started working when Snowmass started talking to me about being the joint chief. They're very dislike organizations, but we complement each other very well. They have a lot of paramedics, we have few paramedics, so when we're down one, they help us out with staffing, you know, that's just an easy low hanging fruit. The HR component, which is becoming big with us with 35 employees, we've hired a joint HR person, that's all that person does. It's been taking a huge load off of the fire chiefs, we have more time to be fire chiefs now. The other thing that we're doing right now is a joint training person, training chief, so we're going to bring our training together, the two departments. So, we went through this process with Shirley, made a lot of headway, things are looking good. We went out and contacted Bob Cole with Collins, Cockrell and Cole, he's been involved with every consolidation, large consolidation in Colorado of fire districts and even water and sanitation districts. I know he's working on one in Weld County right now that's bringing water boards together, so he's very good with that, he's been a great consultant for us. Over hopefully the next year to six months, he's gonna come up with a working document, IGA, so we can actually form the authority. And that's where it comes to you guys, that we are not raising taxes, that's not the intent of this, we're gonna collect the same amount of taxes that we are doing, but we hope to, you know, come up with those efficiencies. But we want also hear why we should do this, we've got a whole laundry list of why's we, you know, things that we've come up with that are the long hanging fruit and good reasons for doing this and then some why wouldn't, why not to do this? And that's what we wanna hear. If you as a council see things that you don't think this is a good idea or citizen concerns, we wanna hear those, because we wanna address those, we wanna vet those out, we wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing for our communities. That's pretty much it for my spiel, Ed, did you wanna go?
Yeah, I need to put my two... Two microphones. Dueling microphones. I'm gonna echo what Scott said, that it's an improvement, but let me retract that. In my experience, which has been many, many years in fire prevention of valley, 35 years, I can see, from an operational standpoint, from a fire prevention standpoint, I could see many, many reasons to do this. One of the reasons I really enjoy, I like, if we're the training officer, we're gonna have a training officer to train both departments the same way. So when we get a mutual aid call, we can just seamlessly show up, either they up down here or us up there and we're not gonna have any hiccups as far as operations go. We've been doing this, like Bill said, for about three years now and we felt it's about time to adjust you and we would like to know what input you may have, we would love your input, that's why we're here, is to say, okay, this is how we see it from our side, how do you see it from your side? And we'd just love to see that interaction between the board and the fire districts. Thank you.
How dare you talk about collaboration and government efficiency? That sounds great, it's a great idea and you don't hear that often, hey, we have an opportunity for you, save some money, be more efficient? Cool.
Thank you.
Well, for another added example, our fire chief, or fire marshal just retired, Bill Harding, and John Melly has been coming down from Snowmass and helping out Brooke, who is eventually gonna hopefully take Bill's position. Am I right? Yeah, so it's already...
Secession plan, yeah.
Because had we not done that, we'd have had to hire a new one, which we hopefully will do in-house, so I just wanna throw that in there.
Anyone else?
You say you don't wanna raise taxes, but every, you know, certain things we know are going up and that's taxes eventually. What happens if you both have district-wide elections that passes and one fails the other? Any thought of how to share that difference in income equitably or do you see that as a problem?
I think those are questions that we'll be, you know, talking with Bob about and I think those are good point because we have sort of glossed over that, how does that get dealt with? And it's very cautious of how you deal with that and a lot of these things aren't just wants, they're probably needs and a lot, we've been lucky that our communities have supported the fire districts, but we've been very physically frugal, we believe, and, you know, tightening our belts and I mean, this is one other way Bernie, that I can't answer your question to say we're gonna pare down in Snowmass if it fails in Snowmass and boost up in Basalt, but, you know, fire, rescue, ambulance, medical, all those things are becoming more and more important over the years. You know, we were chatting a little while ago, most of us, I've been playing this game for, you know, 30-plus years and, you know, the first years Bernie, we were running out fire trucks with beers in our hands, you know, and stuff and things have changed. And we know that we can't and the people don't do that anymore because we need to be professional, we need to be responsible when you call us that you're having a concern that we're there. But these districts have morphed a long way from those 30 years ago and we all feel very proud of the involvement we've been in and dealing with, the structure and the organizations, the policies we set. So those are the questions that we're gonna have to answer when you, when time comes when we're really coming forward with this, but, no, I can't tell you what the magic is on that.
Well, I have no objection, it seems to make a lot of sense, but somebody interested in finance, I would definitely encourage your attention on those difficult...
No, no, that's...
I'm sure it's a difficult area.
Bernie, that's exactly why the Carbondale, Basalt consolidation talks stalled, because of just those questions that we couldn't answer.
Yeah.
I'm completely in favor as a spouse of a Snowmass Wildcat firefighter, paramedic and hearing John's experience of going to the live training fire in Eagle recently and how, how it's going to elevate the services that we receive here in Basalt, that the volunteer fire department, the volunteer haven't had so many experiences of going to a live fire training or it's been years and years between them. And it's just going to elevate both communities. Each department has their own strengths and this is exactly to Oden's point of working together, having those agreements, collaborating and elevating the service that we provide to our citizens, so I'm fully in support.
And a last moment, I don't think we would be here without Chief Thompson, you know, if he wasn't the individual seated in Basalt, I wouldn't have made that effort because I value what Scott has learned and taught me over the years and we've worked together and I feel he's of value to all our communities. And, you know, we are looking at things down the road, how do we enhance our training? Can we put a training facility down here that we all use? Because granted, we don't get called to live fires like they do in Denver or Grand Junction and other places, but we need to be ready when that time, that bell gets rung.
Well, the question I have is, you know, I've worked with Scott for many years and I really enjoy Scott, but you always have to think about, Scott's not gonna do this forever, maybe, but probably not, is how, how does that work when you have this fire authority? How do you hire, who, how do the boards work together to, you know, hire new fire chiefs and to be able to lead the department when you have two different districts?
Well, I have a succession plan in place.
Oh, cool.
I'm only planning on being here for a few more years, I've already served 17 as the fire chief in Basalt. Soon as I get kids out of high school and into college and figure out how to pay for that, I'm done.
Well, I don't want you to leave.
I hope.
We won't let him go.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't want him to leave, but it has the communities to decide.
But, you know, that's truly, it's with the two districts together, to be able to hire from outside or recruit somebody, it's much easier than a small fire department with a low salary.
And we also have good people in bed with us right now, which may, you know, at some point move, but some of those guys, and, you know, don't have any women in there, but some of those guys may be, you know, nearing the end of their service also. So we will look at that and we'll probably basically have a new fire board, you know, the districts will still have their meetings and their time, but we're probably gonna have a joint fire authority board also, which is combined of Basalt and Snowmass board members. So it's gonna be a little bit larger organization to deal with, but again, it's, we don't see that as a big stumbling block, Gary, because we, there are a lot of people out there would love to come here and run an organization like this. And we're finding, like I said earlier, more of these districts across the state are looking at these kind of deals, whether it be Colorado River Valley, which was what, Battle Mountain, Rifle, Silt, got together, Newcastle, so they've joined and so you're seeing this happening across the state and there's good reasons for it. So we're looking at those pros and cons and trying to make sure before we jump, you know, into the deep end, that we're doing the right thing.
And again, just to answer your question, or to judge your question also, when it's combined with the authority, we'll have more resources to offer and people coming in and make it more attractive for the people to come in and do what we need them to do or hire them to do what they need to do.
So the training component of it and the schooling component of it, there's several individuals in our organization, we have two of our deputy chiefs that just finished the master's program at the Fire Academy, they just... They just become executive fire officers. So, you know, those are, that's the succession plan, is those people going to college that live in this community already that are established here, that want to be the next fire chief. I look forward to that.
Well, and I'm more worried about how you select it, is, was, the joint fire board was kind of maybe the real question I had, was how do you, how do you address these bigger issues for the overall department, when you have, you know, the Snowmass district and the Basalt district still going on? But I think, you know, a joint fire board kind of, and I guess more information on how that's formed and where it comes from.
And that's where we're using the consulting of Bob Cole, that's done South Metro, West Metro, Pooter Fire Authority, he's been involved in all of them.
Well, in the end, you talked about the cons. You know, do you guys know of any cons, the pros and cons? I mean, is there any con to this? Because it seems, when you talk about this, it seems to me it's such a phenomenal idea.
The biggest cons are the image and your history for the firefighters. I've got a good friend that went through this in Coos Bay, out on the west coast, and they had fistfights over the patches on their shoulders.
Before it stopped.
The colors of their trucks. So we've put together a employee-focused group, and that's the types of things that we want them to come to conclusion on. So it's a buy-in of both organizations.
Well, that would be kind of key to get, if we can hear the buy-in from all the firefighters, because then it's a no-brainer for us, because most of them live in our communities and...
And we went through this process. We have a joint staff manual, policy manual, and the firefighters and the volunteers, both paid and career, or career and volunteers, did all the legwork and all the meetings to decide our policy manual, and that's the same focus group that we're going to use on our identity.
I'm totally supportive.
Gary, also, you bring up a good point. What happens at the end of the last hour, and we say, we don't like this? Is there a divorce clause? You know, how do you break this thing up, and what happens to that? So those are the questions that are going to be answered also. I think those are important, that we look at both sides of this thing, and go into this, you know, not everything positive, but there may be some things that we need to understand, and some negatives that come out of this, and that's what we need to hear from the community also.
Anyone else? I think you've gotten pretty good support from everybody here, so, yeah, as long as you answer some of these questions, I think honestly, you know, to me, this is a community benefit, and this will be a financial benefit for the programs, so.
Certainly want feedback. If something comes up, and please let us know.
Right. Well, if you just keep checking in with us, that'll be great, and as you get more information, you know, I think it'll be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
When we come back and we need some money, we'll come and talk.
He came to us a few weeks ago about your building fees.
We can pick out your patches for you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is second readings, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number nine, series two thousand seventeen, of Town Council Basalt rezoning the property at four forty-one East Sopers Drive. James.
Thank you. We have Dave Wilkins here this evening with us, is the applicant on the application. This is a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance that would rezone the property at four forty-one East Sopers Drive to the Arby Cleveland Zone District, as well as approve a special review for an A D U, which was constructed over the garage at four forty-one East Sopers. Background, as was discussed at the first reading, the staff received a building permit application to construct living space over the garage. Jim Wilson noted on the plans that there was not to be a kitchen facility, and the applicant constructed the kitchen facility. So the building department gave the applicant the option of either applying for the rezoning and the special review, or taking the kitchen out. The applicant requested the special review and the rezoning. And as we discussed at the first reading of the ordinance, the P and Z and the staff felt that the proposal does meet some of the goals in the master plan, which is locating A D Us on existing neighborhoods and encouraging these types of units. Staff doesn't condone doing the work without the appropriate approvals, but we do believe it meets the town's goals. The draft conditions require the applicant to file a deed restriction within a hundred and eighty days and before a C O can be issued on the unit. The council approved the ordinance on first reading, and there have been no changes since first reading. So staff this evening would recommend that you take any applicant comments, take public comments, because it is a public hearing, and then provide council discussion, and if you're comfortable, you could approve the ordinance on second reading. We do have Dave here this evening. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to?
No, I think Gary's the only one that wasn't here for the first reading, but I think everybody's familiar with the story.
Okay, well, I'll open the public hearing at six forty-six. Is there anyone here to talk about this rezoning? Hearing none. Close it at six forty-six, and bring it back to council. Council, have any questions, discussion? Mayor Pro Tem, I move the town council approve ordinance nine, series of twenty seventeen on second reading.
Second.
Okay, is this all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Just don't do that again.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a resolution to the Town Council of Basalt approving sketch plan amendments for the property known as the Albany Kittle addition to the Roaring Fork Club. Basalt, this is another James, and...
I'm leaving.
Mark Kittle is recusing himself from the discussion. Hello, Bill.
Hi, everybody.
You're officially off the Wildlife Commission now?
I, one more to June.
Is that you?
Yeah, so I go, they may, okay. I was warned about tar and feathers, all sorts of sarah-humming things, but one more meeting, but that's, that's it. Yeah, I think ten years was...
So we keep you on forever? Local representatives?
Yeah.
So for this application, we do have Bill Kane and Dennis Carruth here representing the applicant group. Would you guys like to, before we begin, introduce your team here this evening?
Thanks, James, I think that'd be great.
Jeff, one more. Take it off. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we're pleased to be here. I'm Jeff Astley, general manager of Roaring Fork Club, and want to hear, we're again here to talk to you about an exciting project for your review and consideration. The project itself is named cabins fifty-two through sixty-four, as generic as you can get, and there's a reason for the symbolism. The intent and the sole intent is for the project, if granted the opportunity to go forward, to blend right in with the Roaring Fork Club cabins. And so it's meant to frame the project, to maintain the look, tone, and feel of the existing cabins. It'd have the additional benefit of addressing the unmet need for multi-generational housing. And something dear to my heart, it would enhance our affordable housing component to a degree that is material. The addition of some badly needed parking, while mitigating our traffic issues. And best of all, the funds generated from successful execution of this project would be plowed right back into the club. I think all the other times this has come to the council and to the planning and zoning, it's been a partnership between the club and a developer. This is being undertaken, again, hopefully, with club leading and club taking charge of the development. Our team, I want to introduce to you Kent Meager. Mr. Meager, could I ask that you just stand up, wave your hand? Mr. Meager's our Roaring Fork Club board liaison to the project, and I want to point out, Mr. Meager also led the buyout of the developer by the group of members, which to me was a very important moment for Roaring Fork Club and the community of Basalt. We may not know it, but that keeps the ownership of the club local, and there are plenty of examples nationally where that's not the case, and where it gets off the tracks. Bill Heckberg, Mr. Heckberg, if you'd wave, is our development advisor, member of the club. Mr. Don Carpenter's not here, but he is our construction manager. And Dennis Carruth, again, member of Roaring Fork Club, and he's a founder and president of approved properties. And Mr. Carruth stepped up to lead this project internally, in a way that more resembles altruism than others. And then, of course, to my right, a man who needs no introduction, is Bill Kane.
Thank you, Jeff. To kind of go back, this is a public hearing, and it's consideration of a resolution on the Albany Kittle sketch plan amendment, and it's an application submitted by the Roaring Fork Club L L C. They're proposing to amend the Albany Kittle sketch plan approvals from two thousand twelve, and they're proposing the construction of thirteen new Roaring Fork Club cabins, sixteen new affordable housing units, new single-family residents, and a garage structure and new maintenance storage facility at the club. Background, the property for the application is west of the current Roaring Fork Club. It's located in this area on the north side of Highway eighty-two. It's this area right here. It's in the urban growth boundary and designated as medium-density residential for the majority of the property. There's a high-density residential area on the northwestern portion, and then there's a buffer zone of open space on the north and the west side of the property. The applicants received several sketch plan approvals in the past for this property, including two thousand eight, two thousand ten, and two thousand twelve. The most recent in two thousand twelve included thirteen cabins, three new residential single-family houses, which were on this extent of the property. And then they also had some differences related to moving the maintenance facility. There was a concept of moving it over to this area of the property. The process that you're going to go through on this project is a three-step P U D process, which means three rounds of review with the P and Z and the town council. The applicant has come back in to amend their sketch plan as the first step in that process. The proposed application changes the configuration from two thousand twelve. They propose to move all of the existing affordable housing, which is currently located in this portion of the property, and they're going to move it to the northwest corner and build sixteen new affordable housing units in that portion of the property. They're also proposing to reconfigure the cabin locations. In the two thousand twelve approvals, they kind of went around the outside of the property and down. They're going to consolidate them in this area of the property, sorry, Tom, and so they've moved the affordable housing to the northwest corner. They're proposing to convert Mark Kittle's residence, which is located right here, into several units of affordable housing, and then they're going to build a new single-family house for Kittle in this area right there. They're also proposing a new maintenance storage facility building, which is going to be located right here, which is close to the existing facility. And the applicant will go into more details as part of their comments, but... So this evening, staff would like to go over the discussion items that the P and Z reviewed as part of their review of the project. They're in your P and Z memo that's attached, and we also have them on the wall here. The first is the site plan changes. I just kind of went over the changes that they've proposed to make, but the key piece there is they're taking density off of the Kittle driveway, which served this portion of the property. As part of the two thousand twelve approvals, there was going to be three single-family houses that would be accessed from that. They've narrowed that down to one, and are now accessing the rest of the property from Maintenance Road, which is better situated to handle that additional density. Consistency with the master plan, the P and Z felt that the proposed amendment was more consistent with the two thousand seven master plan than the two thousand twelve approvals, in that they're proposing to put the affordable housing up in this section of the property, which is medium-density residential on the future land use map, and the majority of the cabin addition is going to actually be in the medium-density residential, which made sense to the P and Z and staff. As far as floor area is concerned, the applicant has proposed to maintain the floor area that was proposed in two thousand twelve, which for the cabins is a maximum floor area of four thousand square foot each, with an average not to exceed thirty-seven hundred square feet each. So there's proposed to be no change from the two thousand twelve approvals in that respect. They are proposing to reduce the overall floor area, because they have went from three proposed single-family residences down to one, so they've reduced the square footage in the project there. Affordable housing-wise, the applicant has proposed sixteen new units. They're also, as I indicated, proposing to move the exist, I'm sorry, seventeen new units. They added one to the proposal. They're proposing to move the existing units to the northwest corner, and then convert the Kittle residence. There was a requirement in the two thousand twelve approvals for the sixteen new affordable housing units. They've increased the size of the units from the two thousand twelve sketch plan as well. Staff has included draft conditions in the resolution that they would have to come back with the net square footage of the affordable housing as part of the preliminary plan, so that staff can just ensure that they're meeting the twenty-five percent of floor area requirement for the affordable housing. The P and Z also added a draft condition as part of the P and Z's review, which would require the applicants to bring back a displacement plan for the affordable housing unit renters as part of the preliminary plan review, given that they're going to move the affordable housing units, so there will be a time there where those won't be rented, so they'll have to come back with a displacement plan to talk about how they're going to address that as part of the preliminary plan. Architecture, they're proposing to be consistent with the theme that's out there. There's an example of architecture in your packet, and there's one on the wall here, kind of looking at the theme. They're going to be consistent with the existing cabins, and that's reinforced with conditions in your draft resolution. Fire protection and water supply, this has been a big issue for the club for quite some time. They've made improvements. They're not on the town's water system at the current time, and the fire district has had issues for many years. They've made improvements to increase the fire flow in sprinkler systems. The fire district has been happy with those improvements that they've made over the years, but they've indicated that the new addition would have to be on the town's water system. So in order to do that, the applicant has proposed two options for running and extending the town's water service out to the property. Those two options would be to, one, take it across the Meyer Ranch property, or two, take it down under the Basalt Old Snowmass bike path there. The applicant is negotiating with Meyer Ranch, or has been in negotiations with Meyer Ranch to try to get an easement across their property to serve it. Staff and the P and Z has included a condition that they have to define that as part of the preliminary plan application, which of those routes that they're going to take for the water service. Pedestrian connections was another important one. In the prior discussions, there was interest in having the potential to have a trail connection in the future from the north side of this Albany Kittle project up to the Uprun area. Staff has included a condition of approval, and the P and Z was accepting of it, to have an easement on that north side for pedestrian connection, if in the future this area were to come in for development and have a trail connection potential there. an easement on that north side for pedestrian connection if, in the future, this area were to come in for development and have a trail connection potential there. Kittle driveway was another discussion item. As part of the 2012 approvals, there was a requirement that there be a safety plan as part of the preliminary plan application to address the Kittle driveway intersection with the trail along Highway eighty-two. It's less important with this plan, but the condition has been included because they're going to reduce the traffic that would be on the Kittle driveway to be pretty consistent with what's there now, since they're only going to have one single-family house off of Kittle driveway. Green building and sustainability, we've got conditions that they'll come back with more detail as part of the preliminary plan application on green building, and the applicants have indicated a willingness to address that. So generally, the P&amp;Z felt that the application was more consistent with the 2007 master plan than the 2012 approvals, so they recommended approval with the conditions that you have in your draft resolution. This evening, staff would recommend hearing additional applicant comments. They're going to have more comments for you, and then asking council questions that you might have before taking public comments and providing council discussion. So I'd like to go back to the applicant group here.
James. Evening, everybody. I'm Bill Kane, and I'm here in my capacity as the principal for Design Workshop. More evidence of failure, the quest for retirement continues. We are pleased to be involved in the project on behalf of the Roaring Fork Club. I'm joined by Ashley Alice. Ashley?
Here she is.
Ashley's our project manager, and this is a great opportunity. We like to think about all of planning work as addressing multiple bottom lines, and we think this one, which I'd like to sort of defend, we think addresses the trouble bottom line of community, economy, and environment. And in addressing each of those, first, we have thirteen cabins, which respond to real changes and sort of maturing of the member base at the Roaring Fork Club. So many folks that started here maybe in their fifties are now having grandkids. The original twenty-four hundred square foot cabin doesn't work well for getting lots of grandkids under one roof. So this is an attempt to offer a cabin to stay within the original cabin vernacular and design character and add bedrooms. And what this does, then, is creates an opportunity to keep members. So we think that added to the reality that the projects being managed by the Roaring Fork Club and all proceeds are going to be reserved and replowed back in in the form of capital, capital and capex maintenance for the club. This has a real strong kind of economic sustainability component for the club. Keeps members, keeps the club on an economically sustainable basis, and I think we've learned over the years that the Roaring Fork Club members have been a great economic contribution to the town. First, in the real estate transfer assessment, so each of these will contribute to the Rita and will have increased tax ratables for the real estate property taxes. And more and more Roaring Fork Club members have really supported the community. The Roaring Fork Conservancy, the Art Base, and many of the nonprofits are gaining support from membership. So we think that all contributes to the economy and the economic sustainability. On the environment side, these are cozy little log cabins, but they really are disguised. They're all high-performance buildings, so these will all have outstanding sort of performance characteristics in terms of insulation and HVAC systems. Probably one of the most significant things about the sort of environmental treatment of the site is the fact that there are no garages and private vehicles do not circulate. So in our site plan, if I can give you a pointer here.
In the middle, of course, the middle.
This is the site plan which we prepared, and the major elements of the plan are first, we will be intercepting vehicles at a common garage at the entry to the project. This is a Maintenance Road, so cabin owner will arrive if their car is intercepted in a common parking garage. And circulation from that point on is in electric golf carts, and there are no garages attached to the cabins. The sort of design concept is for these cabins to be subordinate to the landscape, so we're going to be introducing some grading and water features and landscape that will really heavily screen the cabins, and we'll show some imagery here. The, I think it's demonstrated over the years that once people separate from their car, their average daily trip generation is reduced, so we believe this will result in lower vehicle miles traveled, so a VNT reduction as well as number of trips generated. These folks tend to park their car and circulate in their golf carts for the duration of their stay for the most part, other than obviously occasional trips in the town dinner and maybe trips up valley. The affordable housing piece is being relocated to the northwest corner. We are, this was kind of a first pass, we've continued to make improvements in that site plan, and we will have seventeen units. We will exceed basically the town's requirement for affordable housing. We think we can do a better job of getting these units into campus setting so there's better kind of social interaction. This is a new pole barn that will house all of the machinery in the wintertime, so it will be undercover. And as you know now, the existing street has been used for off-street parking for employees, and we'll get them organized in parking and get cars off of the street. James is a hard act to follow. He's, I think he really summarized the major, the major issues. You know, we feel that we, there are thirty-four conditions that were recommended by staff and the planning commission. We would like an opportunity to address each of those. We think we can meet the expectations for all thirty-four of those conditions. So this is sketch plan. This does not result in a vested right. This just simply gives us the opportunity to come back to you with the preliminary But we just think it's a well-good project in terms of what it does for the club, for the community, and, you know, we think it's a real demonstration in terms of some innovative approaches for management of the car and private vehicular circulation. So highlights, it's still thirteen cabins. We are staying under the original total floor area. The original plan called for three single-family residences. We're only proposing one that's in this vicinity, so that's a pretty significant reduction in terms of total floor area and trips. There will be some significant innovations in terms of water conservation. We have, James mentioned the plan to attach to City Water. This is currently contemplated as an eight-inch line with, really, I think, in terms of fire protection, we'll have a belt and suspenders because these buildings are going to be sprinkled, plus we're going to have super-high-powered water pumps, fire pumps, and sprinkled buildings, so I think we really have addressed the fire protection. So I think that summarizes, we'd be happy to show or respond, we have tons of detail here, but we thought maybe we would give you an opportunity to ask some questions and see if you have concerns about the submission. We are following up on our original approval from 2012, and our original thought was to go directly to preliminary, but we concurred with the staff that it'd be appropriate to go back to sketch, so the planning commission, chosen members, and there are some new counselors on town council, so everybody gets a chance to see this at the most formative stage before we come in with preliminary plan. So Dennis, do you want to add anything?
I don't have much to add, except I have been a member of the Roaring Fork Club for nine years. I'm, I feel really blessed to be working with a great team. I would also advise that POS Architects, or the architects who are doing our cabin design, and very, they're the ones who did the original cabin design, so it's very much in keeping with what's out there now. The other member of our team is sopist engineering, Yancey Nickel and Stephanie Hefenbein, who are working with us on a technical side. We've done a lot of work over the last several months. It's, we're excited about this opportunity to be before you and to hear your comments and to move forward. So happy to answer any question you might have.
Before we get to the questions, I was just going to do the public hearing. Let me open the public hearing at seven-ten. Is there any public comments on this? Hearing none, close it at seven-ten. So now back to council for questions. Katie?
Is there a plan to have solar?
I'm sorry, Kate.
To have solar?
Solar?
To have solar part of the project?
We do not have solar panels proposed for individual units. I think we're certainly open to ideas about the collective, or, you know, we've bandied out ideas for how we might be able to participate in some renewables, but difficult to pull off in kind of, you know, with the cabin kind of design vernacular. The, the answer is no, we don't, we don't have solar panels proposed at this point.
Okay. Would be great if it could somehow be integrated, especially when you're saying that you're not going to use a vehicle, but you're going to use electric cars or electric golf carts, but then they're going to be fueled by coal, and so we're getting somewhere, but maybe not as far as we would hope with that.
Good.
Affordable housing, are all the units, it seems like maybe four units are for the town, and the remaining thirteen are for employees of the Roaring Fork Club? Is that how that's going to work, or is that still TBD?
Yeah. The four of the units were reserved for the town of Assault, and these are basically described as essential public employees. James can address it better. They're first responders or folks that, you know, are kind of first on the waiting list, so four of them have been, are set aside for that.
Yeah, and it's a priority system. As with the current Roaring Fork Club affordable housing, they put them out to employees first, and then for the four units that are allocated for the town as part of the approvals, they put those out to the town first, for town employees, and then, you know, if they don't have interested parties to rent them to, then it falls on to the town's affordable housing guidelines, community housing guidelines.
Tom, on that point, are these going to be rental units or ownership units?
They're all wholly owned.
Pardon?
They're all, they'll all be wholly owned.
By the club?
By individual owners. These are being sold.
Oh, they're going to be ownership units?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, talking about the affordable housing.
Yeah, the affordable.
Sorry, Tom, I thought you were talking about the rentals.
All rental, even the town units?
Yes, sir.
So the town, the town won't own them, they'll be leased to employees?
Similar to the current way that we have four.
Huh?
Similar to the current approvals, where we have four that are allocated to us.
Just one final thing. It looks like a lot of pavement up here in this corner. Is it all really needed? Is it all meeting code, or is it well beyond code? Just seems like a lot.
Of what, Kate?
Pavement.
Oh. Are making some headway. There are a couple of things that are driving that condition. One is we're trying to get all the cars off the road. Secondly, we have a, from a civil engineering standpoint, sanitation is going to be addressed with a pump station, a lift station, that's going to be located in that northwest corner. It's the low point of the property, and the state requires us to maintain a hundred-foot radius, no build zone. So, you know, I think we've been self-critical about that. Our first pass at this was, we ourselves were describing this as empire after Stalin sort of site planning, and I think we, we feel we can, and we already have enough with some alternatives to introduce more landscape and pull buildings apart. So we'll, next time you see this, that site plan will be dramatically improved.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to commend the collaboration with Rafta and the consideration of a bus stop and the possibility of getting more vehicles off the road and making it more feasible for employees to take the bus to work at the Roaring Fork Club, which would then reduce the amount of pavement. So if anyone from Rafta is watching, I please ask for your blessing of another bus stop.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll add that as well, I agree with P&amp;Z on a displacement plan for the affordable housing. I'm curious about that.
Do you want to say anything about that?
Love to. Again, employing over two hundred people during our PDQ, this is a critical need, and believe me, we'll go way above and beyond what the code requires. The relocation plan, again, depending on the pace of all of this, would be a spring or a fall move, and we'd tightly coordinate it and make sure that everyone affected would be affected to the amount that's minimal. Again, I'd love to share the details, but right now, it might affect some of my negotiating position. As you can imagine, in the community where there is no excess or slack in the market, I'm going to have to do some hoop jumping. However, I have the hoops identified, and we've made the preliminary overtures, but I'd happily answer any question if you have any.
So my comments are really on, you know, the water piece, trying to make, like, trying to find a way to get water without, like, using trails as access to get them there, like, don't use the Assault Old Snow Mass, because creating a water line would close that trail, and it's heavily used. And, you know, the connections, the one other connection that you were trying to talk about was the connection to the Albany Kittle Trail. And did you want to address that at all?
Well, we have, can I have the pointer, please?
Thank you.
So what we've talked about is having a pedestrian easement on the north side of the property, the Albany Kittle proposed development property, so that in the future, if there is the ability to get the necessary easements from the other properties around it, we could have an extension of that trail. But right now, we don't have the easements around it to make that work, so we're setting it up for a future, future connection if possible.
And that's included in all this?
That's included in the reso, yeah.
Because I remember that from 2012.
Yeah.
And then, one other thing is, no, actually, you answered it on the.
We have a condition that requires us connect to the Old Snow House.
Old Old Snow Mass.
Which is pretty, we'll get there. Pretty tricky.
They have to come up with a design solution to deal with the slope, and that was a condition of 2012 approvals, too. And when they got into preliminary plan application in 2012, they had a concept that made it work, probably need fine-tuning.
Well, if there's a way you could get it, but it's just trying to connect all those affordable housing units to a trail is critically important, so finding a way to make that happen would be impressive and sure. Another hack would have to develop, design that, make sure that works. That's all I got.
Mayor Protem, I move that the town council approve Resolution Number Seventeen, series of 2017.
Second. Got it. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll see you then.
Congratulations.
Thank you. How are you, sir?
Good.
How are you? You, too?
I spent all the time on driveway safety.
I watch. I watch. Wait. We have a work session. I'm going to have to go in there in a minute.
Okay, are we ready for the next? The public hearing in.
That's good.
So you're gonna get a house on there?
Congratulations, thank you, how are you, sir?
Good.
You too. How are you? Spent all the time on driveway safety.
I watch, I watch. Wait, we had a work session. I'm gonna have to go in there in a minute.
Okay, are we ready for the next? The public hearing in first reading, ordinance number 10. Ordinance of the town council approving a lease agreement for construction and occupancy of a performing arts campus on the town park art center tract in Willets Town Center property. Susan?
Okay, so as we mentioned previously when we had our work session, at the last meeting, we discussed the ACG report. And one of the pretty significant recommendations in the ACG report was that we move forward with the lease. At the last meeting, we talked about the general framework for that lease. We indicated that it would, is proposed to follow kind of the framework that we had in the Roaring Fork Conservancy lease where we bought back the property. And basically, it's, it, it was structured in our packet last time as a five-year lease where they really had five years to obtain a CO. And at the time of CO, the lease automatically went to a 99-year lease. And we had thrown out at the last meeting, uh, some deadlines. Deadline for obtaining land use approvals, final land use approvals for phase one. And that was July 1st, 2018. And a deadline for obtaining a building permit, and that was July 1st, 2020. And then a deadline for obtaining a CO, and that was 2022. I, in the packet, in the first page of your packet, you'll see three discussion items that we flagged. The first one is just, are those deadlines appropriate? There was a discussion at the last meeting that particularly in light of the fact that Takaw was having the temporary where they were testing out different performances, were we perhaps having a schedule that was too quick? That we wouldn't allow enough time to kind of include what we learned in that experience in the land use approvals? But we didn't have consensus at that meeting. It was an item that was brought up. So I didn't change anything in the lease, but it's flagged here for a discussion item. I think the other issue kind of associated with that is if we're, if we're forcing deadlines that are, are too fast, are we kind of setting up Takaw for a, a failure situation if, if they're really not ready to build? So that's something to consider. We were initially kind of looking at it through that framework of that if they're not ready to go ahead, then, you know, we should hold off on the, on the lease. So we wanted, you know, kind of some, some firm deadlines. But that is really a policy question for the town council to weigh in on. The other was just the, um, other performance milestones. The way the lease was structured by Bruce Kimmel and staff is really relying heavily on these land use, a kind of approval milestones. There's one thing that we added, and that is, is that at building permit, that we would have to have a certification from a bank that was indicating that Takaw actually had money in hand, that they could finish construction of the project. And this, I think this is a really good addition because a lot happens at the time of building permit. Remember they get the, because we have it tied also to the financial piece where they get the million dollars versus whatever we've paid into the REIT to date. So we don't want someone just to come in and get a building permit one and they're not really ready to build. So that's one piece of it. But the other piece is just a practical thing that we wanna make sure that they do have the resources to complete construction of the building. The third item is kind of the other deal points that we brought up at the other meeting. And a lot of, there were a number of different subjects, but one of the key ones is just, how do we make sure that the arts campus at Willets is integrated into the arts community in the Town of Assault? How do we make sure that it isn't competing with other organizations that complements those and doesn't compete with them? And that's one that I, that's gotten a lot of focus, maybe particularly in the last couple of days. So handed out in front of you is some amended language. But the language that you have in the lease, it's paragraph five. It's called use of the premises. And the language in here is really geared to making sure that the arts campus at Willets is a performing arts facility. It's not a visual arts facility. It's a performing arts facility. And there's some very particular language in there about that they're not an arts, a visual arts campus, and that they won't have arts classes at the facility. And they won't have temporary art or art for sale unless the art base gives them ransom or waiver. The language was written after discussion with the art base. That's how we came up with the language that was, you know, in your packet. Takaw had some concerns, they gave us some initial language that we weren't happy with. But they've drafted a second draft, that's what's in front of you. And that's what Jenna Mo referred to in the citizen comments where she said that her board was agreeing to this amended language. So in this little package, it says 9A in the corner, you see Ryan suggested language. It's just, it's usually adding that the art base can waive that provision. And there, you know, by way of example, there's, there's some cases that it might be very appropriate for them to, to have visual art on display. And so we're just trying to deal with it in a fairly easy way. So attached in your packet is also the amended language that Ryan's referring to here. And there was just a couple of other typos that Jody Edwards caught when he looked at it. I know there's one other change that Tom Smith has flagged that he would like to add to the lease. And it really just has to do with the fact that right now if, um, yeah, I think it might be.
So paragraph 20 expresses compensation to Takaw in the event of termination of the lease, for whatever reason. And disposition of the improvements in that event. As it's currently written, the town is obligated to buy the improvements. And the council, this council can't bind a future council to spend funds that aren't in the budget or in, in the town's general funds, budgeted and appropriated. So that provision needs to say that it's at the option of the council, of the town. Here, here identified as the landlord, it's at the option, its option to purchase. If it chooses to do so, appraised value makes sense as a way to, to establish the price. But the agreement needs to be clear that it's at the option of the council at that time because of the, of fiscal constraints that may exist at that time.
And one other thing, just to wrap up my presentation.
Maybe one other thing to kind of wrap up my presentation. And that is that the last provision of the lease refers to a yearly report for the council that speaks to talking about the social capital benefits at the time that they're making the report, but also speaks to these financial reports that we want Takaw to make. And initially, Takaw had suggested that maybe the last provision in there regarding reporting on fund balance in, in a building maintenance and capital repairs fund, maybe that be struck. But we left it in the lease at this time. And we can talk with the applicant more before a second reading. Maybe the last thing that I mentioned is that le, it's on the agenda as a public hearing. It's not an advertised public hearing, the, the public hearing will be at the second reading.
So I can't do a public hearing?
You, you can, I'm just saying that it's not a legal requirement.
Well, I will be doing, I'll do a public hearing just in case, but I'll let Jody and Ryan and.
Very quickly going through Susan's comments, we're okay with the deadlines, we're optimistic. We think we're, we're not worried it's too fast. We think we're gonna be there, hopefully even ahead of schedule. The performance milestones are okay with us. The, and, and the deal points, I would add, I would only add one thing with regard to what Tom is suggesting. I think we need to, and, and Tom and I can work on this. We need some language for what if the town doesn't exercise its option? So the lease terminates whether it's because we hit 99 years or because there's some other problem. And the town does not exercise its option, then we gotta figure out what to do with the property and the building. It's your property, we're gonna be owning, under this lease, we're gonna own the building. So now what do we do with it since the lease has been terminated? And I think Tom and I can work on that.
Maybe, but I don't think the council can approve.
I don't think the council can approve the lease without knowing what that.
Right.
What that is, so we'll have to work on it.
Between now and second reading, yeah.
Any other questions? Specific questions, I will open a public hearing. It's at 7:32. Any public comments on this? Nope, close at 7:32. So back to council for discussion.
I have questions. The first one is section three or item three regarding rent. It seems like this could take staff time to execute. And I feel like perhaps existing leases that we have with nonprofits, we haven't charged. But the contemplation of considering something that covers our administrative costs, I would like to put that out there to be considered. My other thing is 16, compliance with law nonprofit status. The final sentence says, the tenant shall maintain IRS 501(c)(3) status. If they don't, do we then fall into 21, the default clause? Or do we have to explicitly state?
It would be a default.
Okay, so as it is written, that is a clear default.
Any violation of the, if there shall be a default in the performance of tenants' obligations under this lease.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's.
If that's an obligation, they have to continue to satisfy that requirement.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then I know you both hit on 20, the compensation for improvements, but that is a major concern for me.
Which one?
Uh, 20, the compensation for improvements that I know that you're going to consider or you're gonna continue conversation related to that. But that is, until that is resolved, this lease to me, I, I can't move forward with it. That is such a massive obligation on the town as it is written. And Tom, you had mentioned earlier that there could even be some type of maximum amount that's written in there.
Well, first of all, I, I recommending that it be revised so that the town is not obligated, but has the discretion to acquire, right? So that if the financial obligation is unacceptable for whatever reason, or for any other reason, the town can decide not to do it. Now, in terms of setting price, there, you know, there are different ways of, of looking at it. And, you know, I'm not a financial expert, but in, in typically in a transaction where you need to establish a price that's independent of the two parties, an appraisal is a standard way of doing it. But, you know, considering the fact that the town is, is expending public funds, you may, you may, it may be appropriate to set some upper limit. But the problem is setting the upper limit in terms of real dollars when you're talking about a 99-year lease is pretty much next to impossible to do. So I, I just don't know how to preserve fiscal responsibility for future council, except one, to give the council discretion, looking at appraised value and the town can then decide. Now, with that, that said, the parties can always agree to something else. I mean, they can voluntarily agree to some other way of dealing with it. But that would be the foundation or the ground floor for any negotiations. Now, I'm sure that what Jody's referring to is they, you know, if they haven't been able to make it as a performing arts center, chances are nobody can. And so they're probably gonna want some vehicle for the town to consider changing the use of the improvements. And I'm assuming that's what we're gonna have to talk about.
Or if it comes back to the town, we would have.
Then the town, if the town owns the land and the improvements, the town has discretion to decide if it's the owner, what it wants to hap, have happen there in the future. It is, but they can amend it.
So I guess 99 years also is just really, it's forever.
Pardon?
It's basically forever. And it puts us in these difficult, a difficult situation as you just described in terms of creating the value that if this were to ever revert back, what's, is there a solution for that? Does this lease need to be reduced?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not following the question.
I'm basically saying, you just, you just described the quandary we're in by having a 99-year lease. And then the clause 20 and sorting that out and how they play together. Do we need to truncate the years of this lease?
I just don't, I don't know what to put in there, except that you can decide you don't wanna buy it.
It's a different question.
Or except.
Right.
Lowering what now? Oh, lowering the number of years. That's a discretionary issue, yeah, I mean.
If that could then play into making compensation for improvements in item 20, something that's actually going to mean something? Do we need to reduce the number of?
Yes, please, thank you, Gary. If you decrease the number of years in the term, you're gonna make it equally more difficult for us to go out and talk with donors about putting their money up. And we gotta go raise several million dollars for a building that's gonna disappear in 10, 15. I don't know how many years you're talking about, but by being able to show them a 99-year lease, the forever that you're talking about, it's like, okay, we're, we're helping buy a building and this thing's gonna be here and be doing what we want it to do forever.
I understand. I feel like it's just, it just makes this difficult, part 20. Then I know I was the one that kind of brought this up about the, what I feel is an accelerated deadline with land, land use approvals a year from now and then two years, building permit, and then five years from now, a completed construction. And the fact that this summer is gonna be your first opportunity to provide programming and just how that is going to potentially morph your plans. And I know that you don't wanna hear me say that. But, I mean, we have an example in town in which a nonprofit came in with a plan. And it's less than half now that they've had time to really determine their vision, their mission. I mean, and they've existed for 20 years and they changed their plan drastically. So that would be, that's my concern about this accelerated deadline is that we are not allowing you to learn what this community truly can support.
It, it can, it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a back door, if that's what you're suggesting. So that, you know, we're, we're gonna do our damn best to hit these deadlines. But if by July 2018, we don't hit the land use approval deadline, but you see we're in the process and we're making a good faith effort and you're comfortable with the level of progress, maybe you kick that out another six months. And then you do that kind of thing with each one of the deadlines, I mean, they're your deadlines. If you wanna make them longer, great, we'll try, we're gonna try and beat them in any case, whatever they are. But we're perfectly happy for you to let them go longer. And if you wanna build that into this document?
It's already built in.
Okay, D, wasn't that D or something?
D on page three, 16D.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there it is.
So, I'm very much in support and a hundred percent aligned with Katie's points, and taking those to heart in this document. With the deadlines, I would like to, and how it relates to the financial implications of what is being, it is, we attempted to decouple the financial agreement to the lease agreement, but no matter what, they're inextricably linked. And I would propose extending the deadlines by twelve months for each of these in order for the financial to catch up and be proven to meet the lease agreements. And that's where, yeah, if you beat the, it's, it's a win-win, and it just provides incentive for TACAA to meet those goals, those milestones.
Question on that one. So do you want to move the final deadline by twelve months or just the first two?
I'd say all, all three of them.
All three, so there would be basically a six-year lease at first?
Correct. And, um, as well, section twenty, the compensation for improvements, again, it's very concerning. Even if the town chooses to exercise, to purchase or not, it's a, it's a tremendous possibility of burden for our taxpayers that would bankrupt this town. That's our operating costs for one year. And that's truly concerning to put that out there to the future. And if it does, if we do continue with that, I would like to also add the caveat that if the town chooses to exercise, or at any point, that all of the monies that the town has invested, the one million dollars plus the two hundred and thirty, all of the monies that the town has invested into this endeavor, and I know that it would be difficult to write this in, but are reduced from the actual asking price. Or in a way that the town gets it back and the profits do not go back to the TACAA organization for the purchase, because that would be taxpayer monies being paid twice. That'd be two million dollars from the town of Assault. Um, and included in that, all waived fees. So if we get to the point of building fees and improvement fees, all of it included in there. And as well, in section twenty-nine, regarding reviewing the financials, to include in there and to keep Building Maintenance and Capital Repair Fund in addition to audited financials, including the nine ninety-four.
Can I just add one thing? Just on the, the Building Repairs Fund, just the trend now is to not keep a fund like that because you essentially are parking money and you can't leverage it. So the trend is to have a reserve fund of some kind, so that's why we asked to have that taken out. We certainly want to have ample reserve funds to deal with capital expenditures that may come up. But a specific fund for that doesn't leave the, the organization as much flexibility as we would like. So that's why we took that out of there. The trend is moving in that direction, but if it's a, if it's a must-have, then we can work with that.
I feel that it is a must-have. I went to a, a really interesting liability put on by Neil Garing Insurance this morning for construction, and there is a trend of what you lease things, having, having more of the business, the organization's money tied up for future liabilities. And it's, um, maybe in different practices or different organizations' focuses, it does vary. But it just seems like, since we are in a partnership with the town, that the town holds Building Maintenance and Capital Repair Fund, then the organization that we're partnering with should as well, to have that consistency. Those are my comments.
I want to focus on this, page nine, number one. Schedule under deadline of five, please. Mike?
Mike, oh, sorry.
What, what section?
Section one, on the very first page. Deadlines for TACAA Performance Land Use and Construction. It says, staff identified the following discussion items scheduled presented at the May ninth meeting. Might be too aggressive, particularly given the timing of the temporary and what TACAA should learn from that. And I'm totally supportive of the temporary and pop-up performances as your way to build audience, build recognition, build donor appreciation, and build experience in the market. I have no real confidence in some outside marketing study coming up with a realistic number that would be a reasonably good estimate based on the two reports that I've seen that were paid for. I think your, your best estimate will be based on your experience with the temporary. Recognizing that, I think I'd like to see and hear that TACAA will report every quarter, give us a detailed report on their experience in their pop-up and temporary performances, including audience type of performance, average ticket price, total take for the, for the performance, and cost to put on the performance versus what your gains would be. And I understand, some of these would be little to no profit, that I understand going in. But I think that would, information would be very useful for you to compile and put together in an organized report, and I would find it very desirable to have in as, as part of the requirement, whether as part of the lease or an addendum or a separate agreement.
We're tracking that data, so it's no problem to share that.
Yeah, good. I, I do agree with Jan about the sync, about the construct, capital construction fund, the necessity of it, I've been treasurer of the library, and I just think it's prudent and good practice to have a dedicated fund for your capital improvements. It makes spending for those necessary capital improvements much easier, and makes our understanding of the building's upkeep and condition much easier.
I have one final comment regarding parking, and it's, um, it's an interesting one in Willets, that it's fascinating that so many homeowners and residents of Willets come to council or personally to say that there's traffic issues, there's parking issues, it's dangerous getting around in there. And it had been talked about having a parking study, and it seems, I myself have lost a little bit hope in studies. The information that we get back maybe isn't always up to date, there's not enough information around here, I don't know what it is. But there is a concern regarding the future in parking, and how are we going to mitigate that? So that's what I'm thinking about, is future developments, no matter nonprofit, any type. It's all about the car trips and the parking and vehicular pedestrian access. And that has not been discussed in this proposal or this lease. And that's very concerning because of that same exact thing that the residents of Willets at the, in one breath are saying, we're so excited for TACAA, we really want a performing arts center. But how different that is in the same breath of, and the parking and transportation and walking around is so dangerous. So how are, how are we going to partner and mitigate that? And I don't see that in this.
Go ahead.
I don't think there's anything in the lease about parking, and I'm, I'm not aware of.
No, it's in the, it's in the land use.
It's in the, it's going to be in the land use application process that we have to get through by next July, plus twelve months. The other thing I would, I would note with regard to the town center area of Willets is there's a lot of construction traffic right now. That's going to be gone, you know, in a period of years, I don't know when, but eventually, certainly within ninety-nine years. We hope. And, and I think what you'll find, and I don't know exactly what, you know, the programming, my, my guess is that a lot of the programming is going to be late in the day, not.
Let me chime in on that. The programming will, and I'm not a traffic expert and don't pretend to be, but the programming typically will be later in the day than your high peak hours for traffic and parking. But even more than that, I've already talked to the folks at Recycle and want to talk to the folks at RFTA and find ways to incentivize people to use alternative modes of transport, whether that's a discount on tickets, discount on, on beverage. I'm, I'm committed to trying to encourage that behavior by incentivizing that. I've seen that work in other places, and I want to make that happen here. So while I'm no expert on traffic, I'll do what I can to incentivize people to ride their bike, take the recycle, to walk, to take RFTA or to carpool. That's my commitment.
And if I could add on the parking, you know, you're correct, that originally we thought we would do a separate parking study. And so two things have happened. One is that Jeff Orsolak, who's on the board of TACAA, has submitted to us some additional information. We had initially kind of held off on the parking study because we were waiting for the ACG study to tell us what the programming would mean before we would do the parking study. And the ACG report just didn't take that format in the end, so it wasn't helpful for that piece. But we also put on the developer a requirement, they're, they're submitting a land use duty amendment. And so we've asked them to do a parking study, and we asked them to review the proposal by a professional tra, parking, traffic engineer, and we've asked to look at that proposal before they initiate the work. So we're trying to look at the whole Willetts Town Center, but we specifically told them that we wanted to do TACAA, and we actually thought it was a better use of not to use the town Rita funds for the parking study, but instead to put it on someone else, so that's what we've done.
Thanks.
Anyone else? So, my comments on this are, is that, you know, I do have some concerns with these deadlines that they're a little onerous, though I'm kind of liking the fact that we put these deadlines on it because we're going to hear within a year about the temporary. We're going to hear within a year when they submit their land use application about what they're trying to propose. So personally, for me, I was okay with these deadlines because we're imposing them on them. And so I didn't necessarily want to extend the amount of time for this initial lease because I feel within five years, we should get something out of this project. And if we don't, it's over, and we move on. And we didn't have to build a bill of building and everything else because they didn't meet these deadlines. So that's why I was okay with the deadlines, because within a year, we're not seeing a, a, a man use application with all this stuff, and we're not moving forward. Obviously, you learn something new in the temporary piece, and that's, that, for me, that's, that's where I'm at with this. You know, right now with the ninety-nine year lease, uh, you know, I do like the capital construction fund. I do like, you know, trying to figure out a better way to determine what we owe at the end. And I think we should come up with something before second reading is to try to, like, work on that piece because it is pretty nebulous, because in ninety years, I mean, the appraisal on it is a little strange. So I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see some, personally, would like to see some work on that. But I'm not necessarily against the ninety-nine year lease, because this is supposed to be an arts center. I don't necessarily have an issue with it going ninety-nine years. If we build this thing, I'd rather them occupy it for ninety-nine years than to get this thing back.
Ideally, our grandchildren will be sitting in front of your grandchildren saying, give us another ninety-nine years.
Hopefully, and if not.
Hopefully, nobody will have to go through that.
Yeah, so one other thing I heard was quarterly updates. Do you want, when you talk about quarterly updates, I was thinking quarterly updates for the next year, and then doing annuals after that? Because the quarterly updates that I heard was really telling us how the temporary is going and how that's going, instead of trying to do quarterly updates for the entire ninety-nine year lease. I think that would be a lot.
Yeah, that would be a lot.
All right, so, but I like that idea. I like the idea of the quarterly, the quarterly updates, because it gives us kind of an update on where you guys are at with that.
Well, hopefully you folks are.
At all the shows.
Because you're coming, coming to see stuff, so you should be helping our numbers.
You're part of the dance.
You're the donor base.
Gary, I'd like to, I really like the quarterly updates, and I think that it would make sense to have them through if we do stick with the deadline of July first, twenty twenty, until we get to building permit deadline and bank certification deadline, because that is a pivotal point of a lot of triggers being pulled. And having a lot of information up until that point is going to be very comforting in this partnership.
I could live through twenty twenty with quarterly updates.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's acceptable.
And I could live, in the spirit of negotiation, of leaving the land use approval deadline at twenty eighteen, but then pushing, some, some point in there, having another year, because it is, it's just so onerous.
What suggestion? Since the applicant's okay with the deadlines, and since we have a clause here where we, we can extend it as needed, let's just leave it and go with it. So, that's my suggestion. We modify section twenty about who buys the, our obligation to buy it per Tom's recommendation, and we could move forward.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that Town Council approve ordinance ten, series of twenty seventeen on first reading with the modifications supported by Tom in paragraph twenty.
And presented at the meeting.
And presented at the meeting. Set the second reading and public hearing for June thirteenth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
I just have one comment.
Discussion?
So my one comment would be that if we're sticking with July two thousand and eighteen and we're asking for a final land use approval, there's no way you can take into consideration what you learned from the temporary, because you should, I mean, I imagine you're working on this rate now in order to go through the process, there's really no time to contemplate that, but we can.
If I could just make a comment, we've talked about this before in sessions, the previous studies, whatever they're worth, I know there's conversations about that, have indicated, and my professional experience supports this, what we've proposed is a building that is as small as it can be in terms of the footprint. So, a lot of time and energy has gone into this, and I, and we are going to have data back from the temporary. But in terms of changes to the, to the footprint, there, I don't, I don't anticipate them being very significant changes, it'd be more about the theatrical infrastructure and the internal workflows of the space. The actual spaces in terms of the number of people that are in them for both performing arts and cinematic arts and culinary arts are essentially as small as they can be and as compact as they can be, so that we can be efficient and have room to grow.
Just having a really strong feeling of deja vu, I've been in the sea before in which a nonprofit came in, and they knew that they could do ten thousand square feet. And time told a different story. So I'm reflecting on previous experience and history. And again, that organization had twenty years.
All I can share is my professional experience, which is what I've done.
I think, another discussion point is, I'm not, just as we've stated in so many other agreements and our position is, it's an uncomfortable space, and it's not viable to always leave that open of, come back and ask for something else. That has bit this town in so many ways, and that's a lot of what we're, what, what this council has been dealing with. And I'm uncomfortable. And I'm uncomfortable leaving that into a future. And I, I hope that we learn from our past to bring it into the future. And with, yeah.
We're perfect, we're perfectly okay with the extra time. I mean, this, if you want to add twelve months on every one of those, that's fine. We think we'll meet it, but I, I don't want this to be a point of contention.
That's the funny part is that it, it's, if, it really is up to us when to set these deadlines. So-
Right.
If we want to push the, at least the, the land use approval deadline and the permit building deadline a year. I don't, I, I mean, personally for me, I don't want to push the end deadline. But, you know, pushing those two deadlines a year, I, I, it sets the, no precedent because they're not going to have to most likely ask for buying the extension.
Well, sixty addresses it.
Sixty does, I mean. So, are we sticking with this or do you want to move it a year? What did I say? We have a motion in a second.
Someone can move to amend.
Sure, I'm, I'm, does the council want to amend it and delay everything one year?
Just the first-
The only way you get to answer that question-
Is to vote.
Yeah.
Okay. So somebody else make a motion?
Or we just need to vote?
Well, no, may, you can make a motion.
It's going to be amendment, the amendment has to be moved and seconded and you vote on the amendment first and then you vote on the primary motion, which would incorporate the amendment.
Does someone want to do that? Or do we stick with this and we can potentially do it?
I'd like to discuss the merits a little bit. I'm just, I feel like I'm voting on something that I-
You can do it at second reading too. I mean, this is not the final approval. So you can, we can have another crack at this at the next one.
I, I'm not sure I understand the pros and cons of moving it. So I, but I'm ready to move on this motion as it is.
Me too.
Okay, so I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you next time.
See you in three weeks or whatever. It's at you and me. Kill me. I can't get this meeting done on time.
Yes, sir.
Either, it's either five minutes or it's a half an hour, that's your problem.
That, that, that thing for fifteen minutes. Okay, so we got, uh, we got a first reading of ordinance number eleven. Down, Council of Town of Basalt approving a new easement and construction license agreement at two forty Cottonwood Drive in order to widen sidewalk on the east side of Cottonwood Drive. James?
Thank you. Uh, as Gary indicated, this is a, a proposal for an ordinance on first reading that would, uh, grant an easement agreement as well as a construction license, uh, for the town to be able to widen the sidewalk on the east side of Cottonwood Drive from between three and four feet, uh, to eight feet. And this would be on the section of Cottonwood Drive that goes from the elementary school, which is located right here, uh, up to Riverside Drive area. And currently it's a very narrow sidewalk. And, uh, as background, staff has been working with, uh, the town's contract engineer, SGM, on plans for widening that sidewalk. Uh, was a top priority as part of the safe routes to school discussions that were going on in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the town has enough right of way to widen that sidewalk along the majority of the, uh, kind of, uh, leg there, with the exception of the two forty, uh, Cottonwood Drive property. So SGM representing the town has done some negotiations, uh, with the, uh, property owner of the two forty Cottonwood Drive, uh, property, which is Tila, Tilio Cerise. Uh, they came to a conceptual agreement, uh, which was formulated such that the town would get the additional easement area in exchange for the town paying for the cost, uh, to replace a cracked driveway on Tilio's property, as well as to construct a retaining wall adjacent to the location of the new sidewalk. And to kind of do a little bit of regrading in the area between the sidewalk, uh, and the driveway. The way it is set up is that the council would review this easement agreement. Uh, then the town would put the work on Tilio's property, uh, out to bid, uh, which would determine the actual amount that the town would pay for the easement. Uh, and then staff would come back to the council, uh, after we get those bid amounts. And then we could talk about, uh, the funding allocation, uh, with the council at that point. So staff would actually recommend approval of the ordinance on first reading. And then set a public hearing and second reading for June thirteenth. Cerise indicated that he was generally accepting of the easement agreement. He did want his attorney to look at it in a little more detail between first and second reading. So staff this evening would recommend, uh, taking public comments, uh, providing council discussion. And if you're comfortable with the concept, approving the ordinance on first reading.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? Yeah, I'm going to open the public hearing at eight oh six. Mark?
Hi, thanks Gary. Should I sit here?
Yeah. Got to be on the mic.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mark Kozinski. Um, I don't have any children that are, um, attending Basalt schools, but I did take it upon myself to check this out this morning. I had heard that there were hundreds of children that were using the sidewalk and I, I don't know, you know, I just, I, I live on the other side of Cottonwood Lane. So I did do, um, a survey in between, I was there between seven thirty and eight fifteen this morning. There were four children, um, you know, that actually used that sidewalk coming across the bridge, co- counting across the bridge, Riverside Drive, Village Co., Village Co. So there were four. And in the afternoon, I was there between three and four thirty. And there were six children that used that area. And I will say, um, I was very surprised at the congestion in the morning coming up because there were lots of cars. I didn't really feel that it was dangerous at that point. However, in the afternoon, um, when the cars were leaving the school, they're going really fast there. And I understand the, um, desire to make that safer. Um, I'm not sure how much a wider sidewalk is really going to make it safe. If you look at the speed limits, there's a couple of things, but if you look at the speed limits around town, the speed limit's going out that and it's around the corner, sort of a fallaway corner. It's fifteen miles an hour, which is the same speed limit as Midland Avenue going straight down Main Street where there's no children or typically no children. And also Cedar Drive, that's fifteen miles an hour coming down from the Basalt Mountain where, um, you don't expect to see pedestrians. So I, you know, if you, if you look at that aspect of it, I would encourage council and post and who, who, and the police department to take a look at really, um, the traffic control, the speed limit signs. There's two speed limit signs, um, as you're coming from Cottonwood Drive as you're coming up. You know, for, for people to pick up their children and all, um, on that side. There's only two next to the school and there's one on the corner. If it were me, I know I'm not the expert on this, but I would encourage having the, um, traffic control, the police officers, maybe Officer, uh, Chief Knox, have, take a look at this. And perhaps around the corner, put several, maybe drop the speed limit to ten miles an hour or less and put maybe five signs that just say, because there's no signs now that say, you know, it just says fifteen miles an hour and the cars rip down there. So I understand the concern that whomever is making this request, you know, for it. But I think that that should be the first step really to reduce the, uh, the speed limit in that, in that area. So, you know, before, you know, you proceed with, uh, you know, doing a lot of construction, it's, because there are several other routes and, and if you're going to go ahead with it, but at least maybe add that into the mix if you're going to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Mark, uh, when you say people are ripping down there, if the speed limit is fifteen, are they going twenty or are they going thirty?
Usually, I mean, typically people go five miles an hour over the speed limit. So I think maybe they were going twenty, but if maybe made it eight miles an hour?
Yeah.
Fifteen miles an hour, maybe up to this, I think that's too fast as well. Um, I, I happen to live down there in, you know, on the, the seven eleven park. And I never, I always thought it was sort of fast, but when I walked down there, I'm like, oh, if I was a kid. And the road is narrow too. And so the cars are only a couple of feet away from you and, and they're going fast. So maybe Officer Knox could, uh, maybe check that out a little bit.
Any other public comment? I'll close the public hearing at eight, ten. Bring that to council for discussion questions, anybody? Mark?
How much of Tilio's land do we need to buy?
Uh, I think it's like six feet wide, basically.
At his, presently at his location, the sidewalk's six feet wide?
No, at his current location, it's like three, three feet wide.
Because in my opinion, I just don't see the need for an eight foot sidewalk.
And, you know, I think-
I mean, if we were downtown on Sixteenth Street in Denver, maybe, but-
I think the concept is to, to widen it to get the kids as, as far as buffer as they can have away from the-
Are we going to have a high curb then?
Yeah.
Okay, I can see that then. That's about all I had.
How does it work with the other landowners? I know that the path to the school, you then have the utility telephone thing and then you have the Cerise. And so why is there this one easement issue with this one property?
To, to be honest, I don't know, but the right of way is wider on the other properties there and this one sticks out. And so you're into their, their property if you want to widen the sidewalk. But the rest of the, the rest of the way and the rest of the kind of leg there, uh, the, the right of way is wide enough to extend it to the eight feet.
Okay.
Cerise is an old property.
That's where mom lived, yeah.
Really? So that's, that's probably how you get it.
Well, and noticing, seeing, um, the accounts payable, the amount that we have been paying to engineer this project, there's no turning back. Like, that would be money ill, or am I thinking of another one with the stairway?
No, that's part of it.
Okay.
You know, and I, and I would like to note that we did think about speed. There, there is a, in the plans for the extended sidewalk and the improvements, uh, they're proposing a speed, uh, table, uh, on that stretch of Cottonwood Drive there from Riverside to the elementary school. So they're going to try to slow the speeds down as well as extending the sidewalk.
Yeah, and this is the overall safe route routes to school stuff we were talking about during budget last year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so it is an integrated plan with speed reduction because I did see that in there. And so that's still included in the project itself.
It is.
Because I do agree with Mark that people go flying down that road and flying up that road. You know, I, I make sure that if my kid, when he leaves school, I let him go by himself downtown. He doesn't go that way, he goes the other way, all the way around, even if he's going back up to get a haircut or something like that.
Yeah.
Because it's, 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 people do drive fast on that curve. I pass that curve and it's bad. So, but I'm, I'm, overall with the speed bump in there, with the speed table, I'm, I'm pretty supportive of safe routes to school. So. Anyone else?
Mayor Protem, I move that the Town Council approve ordinance eleven, series of twenty-seventeen on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for June thirteenth, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so we are now on to finalization decision on town manager contract. So we are right now in public session. Does everyone want to remain in public session to discuss the contract with Ryan Mahoney? Ryan has emailed that he's okay with a public discussion on the contract. I would say if we get into points of contention, that we table those points of contention and potentially discuss them in executive session, um, to protect not only the town, but also to protect Ryan. So he doesn't, you know, we don't have to negotiate all those pieces in it. And Ryan is, I think, available? Or is he standing by? He'll be available by phone if you want, as is Phil. Oh, okay. So I think, let's see where we go on this. If we're pretty much in agreement on everything, we remain in public session. If we do have points of contention and we do want to talk to Ryan, that Ryan probably want to talk about that in executive session. So, um, we do that.
I'd just like to add that I have not seen this email from Ryan and I'm going to trust, but I would prefer to see the release and-
It was, I thought it was forwarded to-
I thought I got it.
I forwarded it to everyone on a week, on, um, on Monday, the fifteenth. Along with, um, my comments on each of Ryan's ten points.
But that wasn't his agreement to have a public discussion about it.
Oh, that, that part, he sent that to me.
So we haven't-
We haven't seen that.
So you are, you have it in writing?
I have it, yeah. Isn't that good enough that I'm telling you I have it?
For me, having the town attorney having it is good enough for me.
And to clarify, he's fine with every aspect of that contract being discussed?
I'm sorry, he-
And he has agreed to have every aspect of the contract discussed tonight?
Yes.
In public?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and he doesn't have, he's not covered by, he's not an employee of the town. He's not covered by any Colorado laws on personnel rules or anything else.
But we are negotiating a contract and we're going to, we agree to negotiate a contract in public. That's what we're-
You don't have to discuss it in public if you don't want to.
You can ask it.
But that's the thing is, it's not a tel-, it's a written consent.
It's what, the written-
Right now, you don't need written consent. He's not a town employee. He, John has gotten Ryan's consent to discuss this in public session. It's up to us if we want to do this in public session or executive session, so-
You don't need anything from him. The, the rules on open meetings law and personnel matters relate to your employees.
And I understand that. I feel like we are in negotiation and I don't want to harm someone or have a person feel harmed before they're even in our employment. And so that's what I want to know. And it sounds like you-
He has agreed.
Have the reassurance in writing that Ryan is okay. We are going to discuss and negotiate his contract in public.
He has agreed that the town can discuss this in public, yes.
Mayor Protem? Yes.
I've had conversations with Ryan about this and in general, that's correct. If it gets to some major issue, I think he would be less comfortable doing that and having that done in public.
Well, that's why originally I said, let's see where we go in public session. And if we have major issues, we'll lower them down. And instead of being, you know, public with it all, maybe we get Ryan on the phone and we can talk about it or we can talk in executive session to do that. Is everyone okay with that? Okay.
So if you'd like, I'll run through it. I've had a discussion with Phil McKenny on these points and he couldn't speak, um, with certainty about Ryan's position relative to the comments I made to Phil, which are identical to the ones I made to you. But, um, he didn't seem to think at the end of our discussion that there was, would be any major roadblock to reaching agreement from Ryan's standpoint. Before going into Ryan's specific ten points, um, I'd like to bring your attention to page five of the proposed agreement, termination without cause.
Tom, where do we have this? Excuse me for interrupting you, but I don't have this printed or-
I don't have it either.
We need all this information to discuss it.
Well, I don't prepare the packet. I sent everyone the contract.
I'm looking, does anyone have that on their email that can forward it? Because it's not in-
It's on everyone's email.
I can do it.
Thank you.
I can also make copies.
Thank you.
You don't have to make one for me, I got it.
I don't need one.
What date is it? What date is it from, Tom?
I have twelve, five twelve.
Okay.
Yep, five twelve is the latest one.
I would like his points, I was-
And I would like Ryan's points, yes.
Yes, please.
Do you have Tom's points?
No.
No.
They were sent May fifteenth, three seventeen PM.
Yeah, Tom's point, Tom was-
And my points-
Your points were sent five fifteen.
At three seventeen PM, attached to which was Ryan's 10 comments as part of the email chain.
It's just not everyone's digital, so we need to provide the information to everyone.
I'm sorry?
Not everyone works in the meeting digitally, and so we need to provide the paper to everyone.
The, the version of the contract that you would be looking to forward, I believe, is May, Friday, May twelve, two ten PM.
Got it.
I sent it to you, Jen.
Okay, thanks.
Jen Riffle wasn't found at basalt.net? What? They took you off.
Oh, yeah? I, I found it in my email another way.
That's so funny. I just sent it to you, and it says you weren't found at basalt.net? Oops.
Did you get my phone message?
I knew I'd see it here, yeah, it sounded great.
Okay.
Sounds like we have some time.
Yeah.
Sixty years?
Sixty years. I don't know how my mother do, did it.
She has a big garden?
No, she's got the dementia going and-
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah. Okay, I've got it.
He's settling out for failure on these times.
Enough, too.
Thanks.
Give me five minutes to talk about it, to talk.
Let's hope it's the right version. I believe it is.
I believe it's, I have it.
Okay. If you have an extra copy, I'll take it just to be safe. And Ryan's changes have been incorporated into this?
No, they're separate.
Ryan's changes have not been incorporated into this. Well, I don't have Ryan's changes.
I-
They're working on printing them for us.
They're coming. I'm sorry.
Oh, something. You're right.
Right, sorry. Well, they're coming.
They're coming.
All right. So this-
They're not fast enough.
Typing them up on a typewriter, and then they're gonna fax them over.
Not Morse code them. I thought they were gonna be put in the mail first and then sent to junction.
It actually shows why we need a town manager. It's about time.
This thing off the road. This packet here are Tom's comments and Ryan's comments.
Right. Yes, both, both are in there. And I can walk you through them. They're not complex in, uh, concept, and there's no, he hasn't proposed any alternative language to review. It's concepts, and I can walk you through those.
Got it, Davis, but I'll take it just to please you.
Just to make me happy. All right. We have piles of it.
So is everybody all set?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so before, the first three issues, quote unquote, that, um, are in Ryan's email, relate to severance. So before, I, my first comment is on severance, but it's different than this, three specific points that he's raised. So let me mention my concern first. If you go to page five of 10 on the agreement, that the, um, paragraph, uh, subsection D of section five is termination without cause. And I'm recommending two changes, which I mentioned to Phil, and he thought were appropriate. First, after, it says, "In the event that the employee is terminated", and I want to make it clear that it has to do with termination during the effectiveness of the contract as opposed to what could be construed as a termination by allowing the contract to run out. And so it would say, "In the event of the employee is terminated during the term of the agreement for any reason other than causes outlined in sub-paragraph C." Sub-paragraph C is termination for cause, in which event he does not get severance. This, and then the other change would be to eliminate, um, third line, fourth line after the, so, reference to sub-paragraph C. That clarif, these two clarifications are for the purpose of specifying that if the con, employment agreement simply runs out after its two-year period, he doesn't get severance pay. He only gets severance pay if he gets, basically, if he gets fired.
So you're changing, you're changing that. The, the one we have says, "The employer agrees to pay severance."
No, it's before that.
Okay.
Where it says, "Employer declines to renew or extend the term of this agreement after employee's completion of the full term or an extension thereof." I'm recommending deleting that. The effect of which is that he doesn't get severance if the contract simply runs out at the end of two years. Okay?
I'm okay.
Yeah, that should be clear.
Yes. So the, his first three comments of 10 relate to severance. His, for, these are all asks. They are not, they were, none of them were framed as demands. The first is that, uh, the severance package, when it, if and when it ever kicks in, includes provision for health insurance for some period of time. We wrote it in as six months, he wants it to be 12 months, which is the same as the other compensation. This is a negotiated point, doesn't have legal, it's not driven by legal considerations. It's up to you to decide what period of time you want to provide him with health benefits in the event that he gets severance.
And to be clear, health benefits would only be for the town manager, not his family or any dependents. It's solely for him. So we have to offer, so if we have family coverage, we have to offer the same coverage that's in place at the point?
Judy, I think you need a mic.
But this is asking us to cover Ryan and his entire family for up to 12 months.
It would be an extension of whatever coverage he has.
Well, we added, we added originally six months, right?
It's six months written in there now.
Okay. Why don't we just stick with six months?
Says employer's share of the cost of employee's health insurance for six-month period.
Why don't we just stick with six months?
I'm good with six.
Yes.
What do you want to do?
Stick with six.
Stick with six. Second point. He has the benefit, the how, the, um, the, he has a, um, housing benefit. As you know, this has been the subject of significant negotiation. And he has asked that the, um, if he's, if he gets severance because he's terminated without cause, he doesn't want to have to leave while his kids are, he wants to have a transition period, uh, defined either by the end of the current school year or a six-month period to stay in the unit, so that he doesn't have to immediately vacate.
What happened with the school year?
School year?
So you kick the kids out of school?
I'm good.
I am not. I would not support an allowance at all. And if he wants to stay in our housing unit, then he can pay rent, market rent.
Okay, so I need a sort of, not a vote, but a show of hands on where we're headed on this issue.
I'm okay with the school year.
School year, two school year, three school year?
I'm, I'm okay with staying in the house the school year, but no allowance.
And if he stays in-
That is, that would be, that is the allowance of staying in there.
Okay.
No, it says housing unit or allowance.
Or get his housing, or get-
Oh, I hear you see what you're saying, okay. Well-
I would not.
He can remain in the unit dur, for the balance of this current school year?
Paying rent.
And we, and we as a town are going to allow him to stay there rent fee, rent free, is that what?
That's what you need to decide. Does he pay rent for the extended period?
I think he pays rent.
I, I know he pays rent.
Yes.
Okay.
He could pay, he could pay rent, but define the rent.
Market rent plus utilities and HOA.
I think it's better if you pick a number, because if you say market, then you gotta get into a negotiation.
Yeah.
So a three-bedroom Willetts?
Two thousand?
Twenty-four hundred.
No, it's great. A three-bedroom is closer to twenty-eight hundred, and then utilities on top of that.
Well, whatever the three bedrooms are going for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but category two and three, right.
We're within the next two years here, so it's what?
Why don't you just do the cate, like what Jen just said, the category? You do it on the category-
Oh, was it restricted, the category restricted price?
Because it's not free market, it's affordable housing unit that's going-
At the category restricted price, okay.
Plus all utilities in HOA.
Right. He's already obligated on that. Uh, the third-
Wait, do we finish that?
Is it a category three or the category just the normal rent on that?
Whatever it is, I don't know what it is. It doesn't have a deed restriction yet.
So if he, he's, if he's terminated, um, he pays, he can stay in the housing unit but pay rent, and we do not have an allowance continuation, if that is the other thing he's getting, right? Everyone forgot that.
And we're saying that it would be to the end of the school year?
Then current school year.
Right.
Or six months, whichever is greater?
Yeah.
Well, that's your option. You can use a, see, I mentioned that, you can use a monthly period or whatever you wanted to do.
Well, because we might want to have that three-bedroom Willetts unit for the next town manager, and we would be essentially paralyzing ourselves. So I think that we should go for the six, six months or whatever is greater.
Six months or school year, whichever is lesser?
Correct.
Whichever, lesser or greater? You want lesser?
Lesser.
He wants at least six months. Is what it amounts to.
Well, it does put us in a situation in which we don't really potentially-
If he wants six months, then let's just give him six months, that's definite.
He pays rent?
Yeah.
I mean, conceiv, conceivably, school year is longer. If he ends in the fall, then you've got a long school year coming up. I mean, this is, again, this is a judgment call as to what's, which one do you-
But it potentially puts the council in a situation in which, when we go to find his replacement, we do not have housing, so we've lost a unit of housing, or to find a unit of housing or pay an allowance, we're just putting ourselves into a situation in which we're indebted ourselves, for lack of a better term.
But I'd say it's a short-term problem, and it's not, it's not super likely. So you're right, I agree with you, but I think we can include some provision just because we'll ma, we'll be able to manage that, it's not forever.
School year.
I'd say. I propose six months or school year, whichever is less.
It works.
I'm fine.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
At whatever the category, the deed restriction, deed restricted rental price is.
That it's deed restricted, otherwise deed restricted price.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'm just, on a minor point like this, um, if he's terminated in September, he's gotta get out in six months, he's asking for this kind of consideration from the town to go to the end of the school year, I don't-
That's what he's asking for.
I'm okay with end of school year.
So you're saying greater rather than less?
He's asking for greater. To me, it, let's not fight over a small issue and create a negative feeling when we don't really need to.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just foreseeing a potential problem in which we're gonna be like, we have a wonderful person to replace you, but you have to, we'll have to find you alternative housing.
This is for us saying goodbye. This is when the council says goodbye, that's the only reason for this, so, um, if we're saying goodbye, how much severance do we want? How long do we want to let him stay in the, it, I, I'm okay with six months or, or the school year or six months or less? Is that, in six months, he's gonna have to figure out what we do?
That's fun, I'm fun.
And that's, it's, it's a generous.
Okay, I think we're good.
Yeah, it's very generous.
The less, okay. All right, next point, actually, the next point isn't a severance issue. He's asking for a remedy if the town breaches the contract. And you'll see in my comment is that a distinction should be made between major and minor issues because we don't want a repeat of what we had before. And, um, that's on a basis of some technicality, someone can claim severance. So I reviewed the contract with the, uh, keeping the distinction, the concept of distinguishing between major and minor in mind, and it seems to me the only, when you look at this contract comprehensively, the major, um, obligations of the town relate to his compensation. That's it. The other points are rather minor. So I could recommend that, um, now bear in mind, we do have an opportunity to cure. We'll get, we have, we get notice, an opportunity to cure a breach, but I would limit it to material breaches, all of which would be in the compensation specified in section six. So that if the town gets noticed that it's not providing adequate compensation, as provided there, salary benefits, retirement, housing, et cetera, we get an opportunity to fix it. If we don't fix it, which is hard to imagine, um, then we would be, we would be in breach, and he could resign. As I say, limiting it to the compensation package is, I think, a reasonable distinction between major and minor, and I certainly can't recommend that it be all-encompassing because, let's say, there's a disagreement about whether the council has given adequate direction on his, what he's supposed to do. "Oh, you breached the agreement because you didn't tell me what to do." I don't think that's something we ought to be worried about, having a fight about, so-
I like that. I mean, to me, that sets what really truly is, and we're not paying him or doing any of those things, that's a-
If you read through the contract, you'll see the town has no other major obligations under the agreement. Okay?
What about nine-month review?
Well, I don't even think that should be considered. I mean, if we miss it by a few days, do you think we should be subject to some-
No. No, I think your suggestion, suggestion was well-taken.
Okay. Okay, then on to number four. He wants the opportunity to cure on the violations for cause or that provide cause, which I believe is section five. Let me get my thing out here. Yeah, termination for cause, section five. And he would like, uh, termination for cause includes the following, and it lists, um, six items. And he wants the opport, he wants notice and opportunity to cure, which, to me, is not unreasonable, but not all of them are subject to cure. So my recommendation would be that- So my recommendation would be that we make, make that clear in here that where there's, where the council views an oper- that there is an oper- an ability to cure, that he'll get notice in that period of time. But certain things like a conviction of a felony, you can't cure that. Right? It's done. So it shouldn't apply to everything.
I would say the only thing he can cure is number two. Those things.
Well, a willful breach of a material provision, so let's say he didn't follow his duties and you want to discipline him for that, maybe he could fix it. You failed to do something that we told you to do. If he can fix it.
Well, isn't that same as dereliction or non-feasance?
Well, it's close. But non-feasance, dereliction could apply to obligations that are the result of the agreement rather than incorporated in the agreement. So for example, the council has the ability under this contract to assign additional duties other than those that are in the contract. Those would be covered by two. A willful breach of a material provision would be something that's actually stated specifically in here.
Jen?
So, what my question is, who decides if it's cured or not?
I say you decide.
I know, and it's a tricky one with a board of seven.
No, it's not. You have a vote.
Yeah, we get a vote.
Right, we have a vote.
I like the, to kind of just stick it to the ones that can be cured.
Right.
And not do it to I don't know, it's I mean, if we just, termination for cause, I mean, a gross dereliction of habitual neglect, neglect of duties? I don't know.
Well, I would give him an opportunity to cure if he can.
That's what I, I mean, I think he should say subject to notice and an opportunity to cure when the town determines in the exercise of its reasonable discretion that there is an ability to cure.
That's good.
Does, does that open us up for litigation in the future if it goes to a court and and Mr. Mahoney says, claims, argues, "I could have cured that"?
Of course.
Right, so-
Every contract is opening yourself up to litigation, I'll promise you that.
But this specifically, Tom, not?
I know, I mean, I can't guarantee you that there's not, that he couldn't contest that. But even the way it's written, he can contest it. I mean, he could say, "Well, I didn't do that."
Okay.
I like what you said.
And, and not what you said, there would be some deadline, timeline?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's like 10 days to cure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Right. Okay. Some of these are minor and hopefully we can blow by them pretty quickly. Number five, he has to get bonded. Davis probably knows more about this than I do, but the costs of that are pretty minor, aren't they?
I'll go, I'll take her.
Okay, so we pay that?
It's a hundred bucks.
And what does it cost?
A hundred dollars.
Okay. Performance review. Now, we decided that we wanted to use a nine-month performance review in order to have some, have his status settled going into an election, so that it wasn't an issue that was up in the air going into the next election, less, less issue for council to be worried about. But, and so I don't know if he's really aware that if he has, if we have the review in nine months, it's sort of a substitute for a one-year review. And to also have a one-year review seems unnecessary because it's only a two-year contract. So if you have a review at nine months, it pretty much takes you in, up, seems to me, takes you up to the end of the two-year contract period without the need for a second review. If you want to do it, it's of course discretionary. And then of course, even if you don't have it in here that he gets another review, you can always agree to do another review anyway.
Well, you want to set it. I mean, that's the problem we have with Mike. Is I'd like to set it and you do want to set it up in the contract because otherwise councils can start forgetting, and we did that one year with Mike, we didn't get it done in a year and
Right. So do you want a review in addition to the nine-month review?
I would say nine months is a great deal and then we would review annually after that.
Yep.
But, but there's no annual after that because it's only a two-year contract.
No, nine months and then 12 more months, that's your next review.
Right, so we're only-
So that would be nineteen months.
Twenty-one months.
Yeah, nineteen months.
And then it goes on from there?
Yeah.
So the second one, give me that again, the second one would be
Nine months and then a year.
Twelve months after the nine month?
Yeah.
Okay.
So nine months and twenty-one months.
I think if you explain it to him, I'll understand, Mike.
Okay. Then we didn't, he's getting, as you know, he's getting a short-term tenancy in the, what unit is it?
Six months.
Okay, and he wants that to be actually stated in here. It's not stated in here. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Fine with me.
Fine.
Okay. Similarly, there's no provision for his pre-planned July trip that he's mentioned and has asked for.
That's fine.
That should be okay too, right?
Yeah.
I thought we looked into it, it's bereavement, and we have a bereavement policy.
Right, it needs to be written out that the bereavement is a credit of five days, whatever, whatever the employee manual states.
Well, if it's in the manual, I don't think we need to deal with it, but this, he's only asking for this July one.
But we need to count that in and state that it is the bereavement period plus we need to decide, is it unearned vacation time, is it we don't have this written, do we have this written down? We discussed it and it feels like we agreed upon it, but it's not written anywhere.
How long is the trip?
Two weeks.
Two weeks at the end of July.
What did we come up with before? Do you have notes from that?
On?
I thought we agreed to what- I thought we agreed that he would simply get the employee handbook stating policy.
So the handbook states that the first five days are a given and then you take to your supervisor and depending on the circumstances.
Microphone Judy, they can't hear you.
Five days is the handbook and then it's up to the department head after that, so we would fall back to you guys to decide. And we've had instances if it's an immediate family or, you know, a parent that some days depending on travel, five may not be enough. So whatever you guys decide, we'll administer it in the payroll side.
Can he? I was gonna say go into the rears for vacation time or sick time or whatever.
Absolutely, whatever you tell me.
Well, there's a number of options here. Among his benefits is specifies 20 vacation day, business days per year.
Well, your credit, what, what we just said-
So we could say that's, he uses that two weeks.
Well, no, he gets five. He gets five for bereavement, so it would only be five days of work time that he would be taking off, so basically he gets a credit for that and you pay it off, I mean, he'll only get nine days.
But the other five would come out of his 20 vacation days?
Correct.
Okay. Does he start at zero on vacation days?
Yes, so they're going to be credited, credited to him in advance.
Okay.
Gary? Just to be clear, it seemed like he was asking for this in addition to his contract, right? So to, he wanted the two weeks and then everything would kick in.
It's not clear to me if, if he was actually asking for it to be in addition to his 20 or just wanted to be sure that he could schedule it and do it at that time.
Okay.
He, he said in his email that he was okay to credit some vacation. I don't know.
I see.
It says, "I'm okay with it, but it is very typical to credit some vacation and sick leave for new managers."
That's why I asked, is he starting at zero?
He starts at zero, we're giving him the ability to take it and-
So what Mark is suggesting is, do you guys want to bank something?
I, I would bank five days for him. I mean-
Sick and vacay?
Well, it depends on what he's taking.
So are we talking about this specifically or are you just talking about starting bake?
This specifically.
Okay.
So he's already getting five days for bereavement?
I understand that. But I don't want to fight over five days when someone's died and he's got a-
Yeah, to me, this is just so minor.
Yeah. So I'm not clear where we are. He uses five days bereavement and what about-
We do this with new employees all the time.
Give him forty hours of vacation.
Yep, and it seems unbearable. You'll hire somebody and-
And the forty hours, does it come out of his 20 or not?
No, we're gonna bank it.
Just not?
Doesn't matter.
Not out of the 20?
We're just asking for vacation this first year. Because we're not gonna use bereavement or we are using?
We are using bereavement, we're banking the five additional days when he'll still get his vacation time.
I'm good with that. Okay.
That's okay.
Then number nine, he's asked for automatic renewal after two years. I don't agree with that. I think that if it's a two-year agreement, it's a two-year agreement and the council should have a and he, a level playing field to decide what you want to do rather than have to argue against an automatic renewal. The whole point of having the two years is that it is an automatic, so. Okay?
Giving him two years.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
And start date June 26 is proposed. That's a Monday, I'm assuming.
And when is, when is his July trip?
I don't know the exact dates. It says last two weeks, but I don't know the numbers.
Okay.
I'm good with it, 26.
Oh, yeah, we gotta clear that with you, don't we?
He's asking you.
You've gotten to respect the camera ready, then. You've done something well.
Okay, so we don't have this all written up.
Well, we're gonna have to vote on a contract, right?
Right, and I think you should have it written up before you have an official vote.
Yes.
So, at this point, maybe the most, I mean, we're not we're a month away, so it's not like it's gotta be inked tomorrow, but-
We have three weeks before the next-
So, right, but I could, with your authorization, communicate your position on these various issues to him and let you know what his response is at that point.
And if we need to do a quick
special meeting?
I'll let you know.
Make it happen?
I'll let you know. And I'll also have to let you know if there are any, if, if he has if he wants to negotiate any of these points further, I'll let you know that.
And Tom, can you please provide us, email us your edited version that you're going to submit to him of what we've covered this evening?
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide you with exactly what I well, I, yeah, I'll provide the, you with the exact same thing he's gonna get. Yeah.
Great. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, David?
Hi.